That is a big help.
I am in a call to order, the meeting of the Stevens Point Area School Board of Education for Monday, September 15th. Roll call and verification of a forum, please.
Ms. Baker?
Here.
Mr. Ebel.
Say here.
Here.
Ms. Ehrler?
Here.
Ms. Faxon?
Here.
Mr. Kokonowski?
Here.
Mr. Presley?
Ms. Scott?
Here.
Ms. Sherrick?
Here.
Ms. Totten?
Here.
Eight board members present, we have a forum.
Okay. Um, I need, do we have any switches for the agenda? Anybody need anything moved around?
I just have some, I have a question for clarification.
Sure.
Um, the Policy and Legislative Committee has been, have been working, um, the last couple meetings on this board and board committee meetings and agendas. And one of the major areas of that policy references how board members request and get agenda items on the agenda. So, the reason that I'm, I just want some clarification because the agenda tonight has an item that was requested by Lisa Totten and an item that was requested by Kim Sherrick. However, it did not come through in the manner that the policy requires. I don't have, I personally don't have an issue with those items being on the agenda, but they have not been placed on the agenda pursuant to policy. And I have no problem changing the policy to indicate that if a board member would like to see an item on the agenda, they should contact the board president and work through them to get the agenda item on. And then frankly, we wouldn't have to deal with the whole requested, bring it back for another agenda, and then possibly wait 60 days. And we would allow the board members to work through the president and the vice president and superintendent to timely place items on their agenda. But absent that, the two items that are on this agenda have not come onto the agenda pursuant to policy. So if the other board members are willing to allow them on, that's fine, but I think we need some clarification because our policy can't say one thing and have us act in a different manner. There's gotta be consistency and we have to act in accordance with policy.
Okay, Lisa?
Um, I was under the impression when we set that policy that if the board president chose to put it on the agenda, it could be placed there. In addition, the, there were always board comments that we were able to just go on there if I-
As long as they were specific.
Yes, yeah. And that was different than an information action item. It was-
But I'm just-
Right, these are agenda items and they indicate my, the question for me is because it indicates next to them that they are on for information and/or action. So by being on the agenda, wherever they're showing up, they are on the agenda. So, again, I would, I would love to have a policy allow the board members work through our president and vice president and superintendent to timely place items on the agenda, but absent that, my understanding is the policy requires a board meeting to bring it onto a board and request that it be placed on a future agenda, and then at the following board meeting, the board then votes on whether it will be placed on an agenda item, potentially going through committee first before it comes to board.
Can, yep, can I ask, and maybe you already said this, I apologize.
Speak up.
Yeah, can you identify the two items again?
There is one item on the agenda, it is, um, 7D is Committee Citizen Member Concerns. Kim Sherrick has requested that's on the agenda. I have no idea what that's about because it hasn't been discussed. I don't understand, don't know what the substance is. The other item is 7H, Closed Session Meetings, that's been requested by Lisa Totten. Again, it's not something that the board was, that we as a board were asked to consider placing on an agenda item.
I think those are just comments, aren't they? Board comments?
Basically, them are board comments. Our past practice is, is that we let you know if we want to make a comment, um-
You just have to tell us what it's about, that's what the attorney said.
That's what the past practice has always been. I, I do get what you're getting at, that it's not in here, but imagine that, we don't follow one of our policies.
Well, once it's on an agenda and it is, it is listed for possible action, then the, the board, as well as the public, have the right to comment on, the board has the right to discuss the matter, and we have the right to take action. And our policy indicates that, that that's not how we bring items onto an agenda.
Okay, so let's bring that policy to you, um, and figure out what to do. For now, it's just, we can approve the agenda as is. These are board comments, they were requested in a timely manner, um, and Jeff and I put them on, so that's where it is. So if, that's okay, understanding what Meg said, if we have an approval for the agenda.
Well, I would make a motion on 7, that we just simply strike or action. I think that that's appropriate in light of the fact, these are comments, they're not something we're gonna move on, but it really should reflect that. And so I would just ask that we strike the words or action on the title of 7.
Would you like to make a motion?
I did. I move to strike those two words.
And accept the-
Yes, and otherwise everything else, except everything else, yes.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table to accept the agenda as written minus the words or action after number 7 only. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Well, I just want clarification, so A through H, and I don't have the revised one. Um, I don't know if we have an, an extra one?
Oh, yeah, okay.
We can't, we can't do any action on any of those, that's what you're saying, just in case if something comes up.
Right.
Okay.
Right, right, well, it's listed as presentations.
I, I just believe we should just proceed as past practice and leave it alone, that would be mine, but.
Okay. Any other comments?
I do have a question. We haven't approved the agenda yet, right?
Correct, that's what this motion is, minus that word.
Okay, so I'm wondering why we have, you, you and Jeff work on the agenda together, and I noticed that there are two items for the transportation. Jeff's not here to answer, but I'm wondering why we have two reports. I've never seen a vice president's report in, so I'm wondering, the item that's on there is for transportation. Are you both reporting on the transportation?
I don't know what Jeff is doing in his section. Mine is two sentences long, so it's just giving the public a view of what we covered the other day.
Okay. It would be helpful in, for, for future agendas, and I don't know how you do it, but it's very difficult as a board member to come to a meeting and have items on the agenda. There's no supporting information. I have no understanding of what the, what, what we're going to be discussing, and I don't think that that is appropriate for board members to be in a place where items are on the agenda, we have no background to them, and, and no information about them.
Would it be helpful if I were giving a report to have it written out, like Attila has his written out? And it would come out with the board packet, with that? I just write down the items I feel should be commented on and clarified, I'm just trying to improve communication. Um, so that's what it is, but I can write it up and have it submitted in time to go out with the packet if that would make it easier.
It doesn't make it easier for me. I don't think it's necessary for me.
Okay, well, we have a motion and a second on the floor, and that's to accept the agenda minus the words and/or action after number 7. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Ehrler?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Kokonowski?
Yes.
Mr., Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick?
No.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Motion carries 7 to 1.
Okay, now we have a pledge of allegiance, we have students from MacDill Elementary School.
(inaudible) 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 So you have three students, and I have more than that, but I know a couple of your classmates or schoolmates were ill, so Isaac, Isaac, okay, I'm gonna have Mrs. Faxon give that to you.
Thank you.
Yes, Casey, Casey's right there.
Thank you.
And I believe we have Andrew, Andrew, right there. Okay, so if you want to turn those this way and look at Mr. Mosk, he's gonna take a photograph, there you go. Okay, so we're gonna have Isaac first introduce your parents.
Um, I got brought here by my dad, his name is Mike Mybinger.
And where is Mike?
He's right there.
Right there? Hello, Dad? There you go, hiding in the shadows, there you go, all right.
Um, I was brought here by Scott Furkus and Jennifer Furkus.
And they are, right over there, welcome, welcome. Go ahead, Casey.
Um, I was brought here by Wendy Joseph.
Where's Wendy? Wendy, welcome, okay, great, thank you very much, thank you parents for what you do every day, appreciate it very much. And then we'll, yeah, first I was gonna have everybody give him applause.
Oh.
(applause) Thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Andrew.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I love you, Sharon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have some state competition winners to recognize from our FFA, so if all of you standing back there almost like attention want to come up, that'd be great, along with Ione. Okay, great. Ione can, she's gonna take a photograph and then she'll come back. All right, come on right up here between Mrs. Faxon and myself. So, um, this group of wonderful students, one state, in two categories, um, the opening and closing ceremonies and the quiz bowl, do I have that right? This is what my certificate says, which I put together, so, well, actually with the help of Sarah. So you want to recognize these students for bringing honor to yourselves, Ms. Hausler, the FFA, your school and the district, so you've done a great thing. So is Brittany here? Let me give that to Mrs. Faxon so she can give it to you. Allison Shulis, that was Brittany, not here?
Not able to be here.
Not here, okay. We have Cat Cork?
Not able to be here.
Not able, okay.
Athletics tonight.
Brianna? Brianna, not here, there we go. Asia? All right, so Mrs. Faxon, give that to you, Asia, you. Natasha? Is it Ratz?
Yep.
It is, Natasha, there you go. Elijah Zimbauer? Elijah, there you go. Is it Zosha?
Zoe.
Zoe, okay, Zoe Zaluski, and Whitney. Whitney's not here tonight, okay. So maybe one of you would like to tell us about this opening and closing real quickly and the quiz bowl.
So, opening and closing ceremonies team is how you would start a meeting? And you like take the roll call of the officers and report to the president if they are all there?
Ah, there's some other things with the closing as well, right?
Yes.
Okay, so it's running a meeting essentially, okay. So what about the quiz bowl?
Quiz bowl is basically FFA trivia, not really agricultural trivia, but just FFA trivia.
Wonderful, and you guys won state?
Yeah.
So, let's give it up for state. (applause) Okay, so we're gonna introduce our folks real quick, start back here.
I got brought here by my dad and my mom, Brad Zimbauer and Colin Zimbauer.
And they are, there you go, welcome.
I was brought here by my mom, Carla Dancheck, my grandma, Sandy Dancheck, and my two little sisters, Kate and Maya Zaleski.
Very cool, where are they, there you go, welcome, welcome grandma, that's great.
I'm Natasha, and I was brought here by my dad, Dave Rocks, and my mom, Tracy Rocks.
Wonderful, welcome. Go ahead, Andrew.
I'm Asia, and I was brought here by my mom, Ning Yang.
Ning Yang, welcome.
I was brought by my dad, my little brother and sister, and they were, they're out there.
They're out there, okay, great, well, congratulations, and I want, thank you very much.
Absolutely, thank you. I'm sure the rest of them could be here tonight, athletics.
Exactly, they're busy.
Absolutely.
Okay, so the board members would like to meet you. Congratulations again.
Thank you. How do you think your secretary does?
So much, congratulations.
Congratulations.
You're coming, congratulations.
Very cool. Congratulations. Congratulations. You guys are awesome, thank you. Congratulations. You're awesome. I know, but you helped a little. Congratulations. Great job. Congratulations. Good job, congratulations. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Congratulations. Good job. Thank you.
They're all that worse.
Absolutely.
Great job, like always.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you.
I don't, is, um, I don't think that this person is here today, is Carrie Clark here? I don't think so. Okay, so we have one more recognition. You're free to stay for the rest of the meeting, it's gonna be exciting, or you can, you know, go home and study, you know, depending on what you want to do, so. We have a student from Madison Elementary here to recognize a former teacher. Is that student here? There we go, Carl? Want to introduce the student?
Sure, I'll do that.
How are you doing?
100.
Oh, good, 100, very well too. So you're gonna turn around and face the camera, and Mr. Knowlton is standing right there, and he's gonna turn about eight shades of red when you get done.
This is Spencer Severson, he is a fifth grader now, sixth grader now, geez, I'm forgetting Spencer, at Madison Elementary School, and he wanted to recognize one of his former teachers, Mr. Knowlton.
So every month we recognize a, a teacher, staff member, custodian, food service worker, whatever it is, and the student is allowed to pick whoever it is that they would like to recognize. We've been doing this now for a full year. So it's our way of trying to additionally recognize staff for what they do, and Spencer selected John Knowlton, a former teacher, retired from the district, and we said, "Go." So Spencer, you're out, you're on.
I like all my teachers at Madison. The closest was Mrs. Brooks, she was very, very kind to me. My favorite teacher in elementary school so far has been Mr. Knowlton. Sure, he wasn't as kind or gentle in his ways as Ms. Brooks, but out of all my teachers, he helped me the most. He helped me a little bit in math, but mainly he helped me deal with my worrying and taught me how to be responsible. In third grade, mornings with me were a hectic mess. When I started in Mr. Knowlton's class in fourth grade, I was always ready. My planner was signed, my backpack was packed, and I still use the procedures that he taught us to keep organized to this day. Like all teachers, he does have some flaws. He can be really loud sometimes. I think by me holding my hands over my ears, I thought he, he didn't have to be so loud for us to hear him. But out of all my teachers in elementary school, I think Mr. Knowlton is my favorite because he taught me how to be responsible or organized and more independent.
And I can say Spencer is much less nervous than he was in fourth grade. And what did we learn, what was our phrase? It's not personal.
It's business.
There we go. He's gonna take a picture. And the board members would like to meet both of you.
Parent?
Oh, I'm sorry, Spencer, are your parents here with you?
Yes.
Okay, and you want to introduce them?
Um, this is my mom, Jody Severson.
Jody, welcome, congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, well done. Okay, Spencer, so Mrs. Totten, who was right there, would like to meet you.
Thank you.
The way he read.
Hi, I'm a guy.
Congratulations!
It's gonna be a narrator someday.
Very proud of you, you did a great job. He's, he's a nice guy, he's a nice guy.
He was so nervous when he came to fourth grade class.
I know, but you taught him how to be independent, right? You did a great job, Spencer, very proud of you.
Oh, man, you did a great job, thank you so much, thanks for coming.
Thanks again, Spencer, good luck this year, and take care, okay?
Thank you, Spencer, nice job.
Thank you.
Mr. Knowlton?
Mr. Knowlton, you didn't lie?
I want to say thank you and congratulations, I know, they were ignoring you. Yeah, really. Love the way you wrote that, great job.
Mr. Knowlton? That was awesome.
Thank you so much.
I said he was a nice guy, I mean, what am I, one?
Thanks, thanks again.
Awesome.
We do have just some donations that we want to identify. The district is most appreciative to the Wisconsin State Council Knights of Columbus, who donated a little over $778 for special education programming. The district is also most appreciative to a large number of staff whose names I'm not going to read through since there are so many, but they are public on the community partnership page. They provided cinch bags that were filled with school supplies, and they donated their time and energy and funds to fill the bags, but I do want to point out the person who was sort of the ringleader of this and did an incredible job, and that's Lori Schroda, kindergarten teacher and instructional teacher at Madison Elementary School. She organized the whole thing, so thank you Lori, and thank you to all the staff who assisted in that.
Thank you. We're on to public comments, and right now our policy stands as it's always been till it comes through from our policy, so we have five total items that people want to speak at, and the first tonight is Reed.
than simpler, and I'm not the only one that believes that, was at the committees and they're admitting it's, it's complicated. Well, anyways, I put down with these new agendas, I put down the minutes, the first comment, and you brought it up, so it must be a hot item, it's this, it was moved, it's in your minutes, it was moved by a second by earlier Baker to have the minutes reflect that Ms. Totten recused herself because of conflicting, but refused to leave the room. What is the big deal about Ms. Totten refusing to leave the room? Now, you brought it up at us, at a session, and it got so much attention, it made the front page of the City Times, got her husband implicated in a deal, like she's doing something wrong. What is, you know, you know, I know the open meeting law, and she's, she's not doing anything wrong, why, why should she have to leave? She doesn't voting. What, what do you believe that, that she's doing? Are you, are you suggesting that, that Lisa Totten is sharing information with people? So why would she have to leave? She, all she has to do is just not vote. And how this makes it in the minutes is beyond me, and I see that Ms. Totten, you're gonna address it, and I hope you address it well. Other item, how committees are chosen. I was at the policy committee here the other night, and there's one that was really screwed up, the members were saying it was screwed up, and I brought up at the committee meeting, you're already choosing committees, and your policy doesn't permit you to choose committees the way you think you can choose committee members. And I, and you were at that committee, you and I were the only two people in the audience at that meeting. And I brought that up, that there's a policy that you have, and it's not just chairman picking the members or the president picking the members, okay? And, and the contacting attorneys, the same way, I'm, I'm gonna speak on that at, at another time. But what I, what I'm getting at is because you guys are rewriting history on the policy committee, is, is necessary, and only two people are there, how does anybody know how you guys came to your conclusions and what you were doing? You gotta start filming these meetings at the committee level. That's what was discussed before you went into the committees, and you're not doing it. You went and bought a, a camera, you got a cameraman, and you could film these meetings. Then you have something that you people can go back and see how people are, what they're doing on these committees, okay? And, uh, charter schools. I went down to Madison, spent an hour down there. Uh, you know, they came here the other day and, and they were saying, geez, we got nominated for, at that charter school again? Well, I went down there and I pulled their files from before, and it passed, they sat right there in the fifth floor of the, of the, of the Department of Public Instruction. They got them for me, and I went through them, and I could share them with you, but it's, you know, but what I'm gonna tell you is, they've come out, this time, they've, they've got ratings of poor compared to the last time. And, 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 you know, because the, uh, and, and, so don't believe everything you're getting from these, these people, so when, when it comes time, I will, I will challenge the report, and I have a feeling they're not gonna get it because they were suggested they won't get, uh, won't get funded unless they make some substantial changes. And some of the changes, I don't think you're gonna be happy with. So, uh, you know, you, people say, do your homework, well, you do your homework instead of just, you know, passing these things, get to know what's going on, I do, and I was, I wasn't actually surprised on how these come out. There's only three people who are, who are judging these, and it's Tony Evers is one of them, and I got his report here, not impressed with, with the study. Only 13 people applied, eight of them got, got, you know, uh, possible funding for the first part, but they won't give funding to this school unless they make some substantial changes. So I just want to let you know that it's not all rosy like being presented to you. So, uh, I guess that's all I have, I'm gonna be speaking later on if I can find my stuff because now with the committees, you know, you got so much stuff there, it's all mixed up, and, you know, you guys gotta, you might as well just go back and meet board four times a month rather than this committee stuff.
Okay, thank you, um, yeah.
There's some kind of weird feedback that I'm hearing on this side of the room from the microphone. I'm not sure, it sounds like, like paper rustling or something, it's just coming in strong from this side. I'm not sure if there's something wrong with the mic or not.
Okay, flipped in, look at it.
Well, maybe it's from the hallway then, I don't know.
Oh, that could be. I would like to introduce to you Emily Jones, she is our SPASH representative for the year. Emily, why don't you give us the 30-second rundown on who you are, and then you can give your report.
All right, well, I'm a senior at SPASH, and, um, I was lucky enough to be voted to be the person, the student representative for the board this year, so I was really excited that I got that opportunity. Um, and I have lots of stuff from SPASH to talk about today, so, um, tonight was the, on September 15th today was the college planning night, which was hosted by the counseling department for parents of the students' grades 10 through 12, and they talk about college, applying to college and finding scholarships. On September 24th, SPASH will be holding an all-school evacuation to practice safe evacuation procedures. On the 25th, the volleyball team is going, going to be hosting the Dig Pink game for the breast cancer awareness. And then, we wanted to bring up how this year has started off really well, and with the help of Student Senate, we've gotten a lot of things done in this first two weeks here. We did a tour and a luncheon for all the new teachers at SPASH. We did a skit for all the teachers on August 25th, the first day that they were back. Cookies were passed out to all of the students on the first day of school to encourage them to be smart cookies. Um, the, um, a lot of the Student Senate members came to help decorate the sidewalk with sidewalk chalk all around SPASH, with just some welcoming messages. And then, a lot of members of Student Senate have been helping with, they helped with back-to-school night and Project Welcome, and we had a lot of people help, and it was really successful. And then, our Student Senate president, Rachel Lai, was a recipient of the Jefferson Award for Outstanding Achievement and Volunteering in the Community, so we were really proud of her for that.
That's amazing, thank you.
And, so you know, you are welcome to speak, raise your hand, speak to issues, we'd love
Okay. Consolidated Task Force, Kim.
Really nothing to report, other than we have a meeting tomorrow at the Bliss Center, 5 to 7, I believe. Yes.
Lisa, did you want to add anything?
No.
Okay. Okay, we are now on to our first board comments, which is Kim Shirk.
I am just going to possibly continue a little bit to where Reed was speaking. I went to look for our policy on board committees and citizen members. On our website, you find the school board committees that were adopted on 3/14/2011. Something needs to be updated there.
What number was that?
185. And then, I believe last month, we brought the policy, and it was adopted on August 26, 2013. So, confusion all around. And we are not holding up to this policy, just to let you know. That's what, you know, imagine that. We can have three non-voting citizen members on a committee, and it has to be voted on by board officers, not just the president anymore. It's board officers have to allow the citizen member to be on there. So, it's a group effort.
And what's that number of that one?
185.
Oh, that's 185.
Yep. This is the one that we brought in in August, this is the one that's on the website. So, I didn't compare the two, so I know we're working on it. Okay? Anyways, I would like to talk to the board regarding citizen members on our committees. I believe we should have citizen members with open minds and without bad history regarding the school board. If we allow citizen members on our committees, committees that have trashed the board in public, including Area Events, the Stevens Point Journal, and in the City Times, not to mention their continuous negative blogs, it would make our committees unsuccessful. If anybody would like to see the articles I'm speaking of, I do have copies. A committee, excuse me, a community member stated at our last committees last week, we should not allow our friends, coworkers, our other core, co-board members on our same committees. It would be like stacking our decks or our committees. So, everyone would think and agree with the chairperson. We should embrace different opinions and discussions at our committee level. This would also help our committees to be successful. At the same meeting, we had two citizen members speak on why they should be selected to be on that committee. Did I mention, only two were asked to come and speak, and it was the same two that ran for school board, so we know they are interested and well-informed. The reason I'm bringing this to the board's attention is because a board member had come to me to ask me for permission to allow that someone who has publicly spoken poorly regarding the board to be on her committee, because no one had sent in an application for her committee. I said I would not agree, and I had asked the president, the school board member, excuse me, school board president, Angel Faxon, not to accept her application. Since the president has the last say, which now I have found out is not correct, to whom the citizen member on the committees, I am sad to report that that person that I and other board members are uncomfortable with has been allowed to be on the committee. Since then, we have received five, nine non-placed applicants, and one that has been seated on the committees already. Again, I asked the board president to reevaluate the applicants and appoint the more appropriate citizen members to our committees. I asked this so our committees don't become a laughingstock of our community, and I and other board members don't have to worry about harassment charges looming over our heads if we have to serve on that committee. If you don't remove this individual, you will be putting the district in a position that may lead to legal ramifications, which you could have prevented. Thank you.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is President's Report.
Could I just, I want to clarify one thing.
Sure.
Policy allows for three committee members, three non-voting, voting, excuse me, three voting non-board citizen members, including up to one high school student representative.
Right.
And I believe the goal has been to encourage student members to serve on the three committees where they are entitled to serve on them. So, I just want to clarify that. It's two citizen members and a student.
And that was put in specifically so we would have a student on the committee with two community members.
Okay. I agree. The website one, what is on our website, so if anybody would come and look at it, says up to three voting non-school board citizen members, including up to one. Okay, I read that wrong. So, two plus the high school.
Right.
We need to read it, we need to write that differently. But I will stand corrected on that one, but I still ask for that citizen member to be removed from that committee. Stands clear.
Any other questions or comments? Yep, Alex.
Comment. I do agree that it's a bad thing to have any negative publicity involved with the committees, but on the other hand, if all we have are one or two members of the community that want to be a part of this, or one of the committees, what are we really accomplishing if we don't have any of them on? But again, I'm worried about things that have been said in the past, and those relationships that have been formed that are negative.
And since then, we have other candidates coming forward, our applicants that have came forward, so.
Is this a conversation that we're all going to have, or? I'm allowing people to comment on the comments, but you get to comment once. So, we're now having a discussion, okay? We're having a discussion. It was just supposed to be a comment that was made. You're right. I'll end it. Because I have a lot to say. They're talking about someone on my committee. I'm not going to say it because I don't think it's appropriate. So, I just want to make that. You're right. So, we'll leave it alone. Thank you. Yep. President's Report. Beginning of school year. The year is off to a great start. I want to thank our staff for always being so welcoming and encouraging and wonderful, and just making this exciting for students and fun. Granted, it's not quite as exciting in high school. I got it. But I was at a couple of elementary schools, and the kids were sitting there with their new backpacks and all their stuff, and they were very excited. So, that was neat. I have been stopped several times in particular to thank us for the amazing new hires this year. I mean, we must have an amazing batch, because I have quite literally been stopped and received emails. So, thank you very much to all our new people who are just stepping right in and getting to know their students and enjoying their time. We're excited to get to know you too. Union negotiations. In my last report, I said that this was going to be our priority in September. There's an error that I made that I'm going to have to correct after, but I'm just going to read to everybody where this stands right now. I already spoke to the person that it was involved with. So, the confirmed meetings that we have are with the SPAEA Thursday, September, oh, I didn't write the date down, 25th, thanks, at 5:00 PM. The Teamsters, Thursday, September 18th at 5:00 PM. And then, there's a tentative, one set with WAC, Tuesday, September 23rd, time to be September 29th workshop, second meeting. All I have to say is there will be one, so plan on it. Topics will be determined, but I know that we'll need the time. October 1st, review of transportation. We had a special meeting Monday, September 8th. We'll be getting a report October 1st on what occurred with transportation at the beginning of the year. It was messy and frustrating for a lot of people. The report will be published on the website, and then the board will meet soon after to discuss that report. I'm just saying this publicly now so that anybody who didn't know we were having that meeting that night can hear it from me now. That October 1st is when we'll be receiving the report. It will be available on the website. In order to improve communication, I'm going to be sending out a president's summary after all regular board meetings. This is for staff. I'm just going to try to summarize the things that we accomplished and talked about, and then I will pass them on to the superintendent. At the bottom, he'll say what action the administration will be taking for each item. It's just a way for us to monitor progress, not lose topics that are raised, and it will nicely summarize things for us every month, and of course, I'll send it to all of you as well. But the purpose, what I'm trying to do is continue to find ways to improve communication with staff. Not everybody has an opportunity to watch a board meeting, so tomorrow, if I sit down for 20 minutes and summarize what we did, what we talked about, and where we're going with some of these things, I thought that would be helpful. And new teachers in particular asked for it, so I think it's a great idea. Thank you very much to Trish, Kim, Chris, and Meg for your leadership and work on the committees. I think it went fantastic. Everything's got stumbling blocks in it, but I think the meetings went really well. Your leadership was clear. Thank you for our citizen members who have come forward. Thank you for all the board members who are giving extra time, and just for all the work that's getting done. What we're going to do from this point on is that each chair is going to keep a running list of what they covered at their meeting, what they didn't get to, and then what's coming. And how we're, the reason we're doing it this way is we've had a lot of confusion on the main board agenda about not losing things, and I thought this would be a simpler way for each committee chair to keep track of the stuff that they have, and we will always have it to all of you at monthly meetings. So, you know exactly where things are, and you know nothing is getting lost. And it'll take some of the bulk off of the written regular agenda. Board request forms. I just want to thank you guys for using them. That has helped a lot. Please continue to. I know it's tedious, but it has prevented things from getting lost in the process. And we have hard copy versions and a PDF that Amy can send you, and I know Meg spoke about this earlier, so I'm sure how this all goes will be in policy soon, and we'll get it written, so it's very clear. I want to know what you'd like to talk about, and let's get it on the agenda and be fair. That's it. Oh, and we'll skip the Vice President's Report. Superintendent's Report.
I just have a question. Is this where we wanted to bring up any forms that were completed, or are we not discussing the specific items?
I'll do it at the end.
Got it. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. So, the report that I gave the board was pretty lengthy, but as comprehensive as we could make it. I do want to follow up and just put an exclamation point around what Angel said regarding the opening of school. Obviously, there were some transportation issues, but the system didn't fail. There were a larger number of students who had scheduling and routing problems, but for a vast majority of our kids, we did arrive to school. There's always going to be buses that are late in the first couple of days, and that occurred. And we will provide that review on October 1st. But otherwise, the school year was off to a great start across all of our schools, and we're very, very grateful to parents and kids, and particularly our staff, for making that happen. There are a number of items here in the report. I don't want to highlight anyone in particular, but I'd be glad to take any questions about any of them, since there are so many, particularly from each of the individual schools. And if there aren't any, I just have two quick announcements to make, and then something to pass around regarding tomorrow's release of the school report cards by the DPI, and what's going to appear on our website, so that you see this ahead of time. But I'd be glad to entertain questions about the report.
Kim?
I mean, are we allowed to ask questions for a discussion? Because this technically is the same theory that we had before, but I hope we can.
If it's clarification, that would.
On E, for the technology, are we using any of Jackson School for technology classrooms at this time?
Well, E doesn't refer to Jackson at all, but Jackson School is being used as a launching place for the thousands of pieces of equipment that we received because of the Century Grant. It was also used as a makeshift professional development center. And it also is being, well, it's being used, as I said, as a makeshift PDC when we have to gather people together, especially for the training for those new pieces of equipment.
So, yes.
Yes, it's used as a makeshift PDC, because we have no place else in the district yet.
On I, other than G, a little, I think we're missing a W on the first letter of G, but I think we all kind of got that, didn't we?
Oh, I apologize.
Yep, that's right.
I did spell check that, so there must be a scrabble word, N-E.
There must be, must be. On I, though, special needs students, I believe I know what building we're using for this, but we don't have any space in any of our buildings to accommodate two students?
These are very, very special needs students, and they're not going to be in the district. And I can't, I can't get into much more than that, Kim, because of the nature of this and the potential for identifying those students or being able to identify them. But they're not going to be in our buildings, but we are providing the halftime teacher and the halftime aide for them.
Right. But I'm just asking, so we don't have any, and I'm not talking about in our schools. I know we have other buildings.
Right.
We have other property that we could use versus renting out another one?
We're not renting space for these two students. These students are going to be in programs that are run by other entities, and their disabilities are of such a nature that we made the decision not to have them among our general student population.
Then, so we're not housing them in a certain room? Okay. On K1, it says about monitoring two sections of class size. Do we know about how long we're going to monitor them? The timeline of any of these, I guess, class size updates?
Yeah. What we typically do is we take a look at the Third Friday count as the date by which a lot of settling occurs, which is why the state uses the Third Friday. And after that, if the numbers are too high, for example, then we'll come to the board with a recommendation to either, which is the three options that we have, either to split the section and hire a full-time teacher. In the elementary levels, it would be to put in a halftime teacher for the core areas. And then, the third option is to provide educational assistant aide throughout the day for those numbers. But if you look at, just for a moment, since you raised the issue, which I think is a very good one, that we only have two what we call hotspots right now, and that is the 5th grade at Madison and the 5th grade at Washington. And those numbers, if you look back on the past four other years, 2010 through 2013, we had multiple areas that were hotspots. This is the lowest hotspot areas that we've had in five years. So, if we were looking at, for example, Washington, let's just say, let's say that that was a minus six, we'd be splitting that section.
So, the Third Friday count is going to be the, which is this week, last week?
The 19th.
This Friday. Okay. So, we'll just kind of keep an eye on them.
You bet.
I think I skipped one. On J, about the technology assessment. Okay, the last, or second to last paragraph, we have designed a process to maximize the participation. Can you elaborate on the process?
There's only one paragraph. You said the second to last paragraph.
Second to last sentence. I apologize.
It's okay.
We have designed a process to maximize, I can't speak tonight, participation.
Right. In other words, what we've done is, Brian has worked with the principals to ensure that the students and staff that are going to be surveyed are going to be surveyed at a time when it is most convenient for them, doesn't take away from class time, that kind of thing. So, we want to get as many students and staff to participate in as possible, along with parents.
But no penalizing?
Oh, no, no, no.
Okay. Just want to make sure.
No. Good question.
I believe I'm done. Oh, one more. Sorry. Sorry. 12. Do we have a cost on the Plover Whiting sprinklers? I think I had asked for that before.
Not yet.
Okay. And thank you for the Plover Whiting numbers update.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Been waiting for those, so thank you with that.
Lisa?
Go ahead, Trish. I just wanted to say, I really enjoyed, I should probably use the microphone, sorry. I enjoyed the little blurb on each school. That was kind of, I guess, helpful for me to be able to identify with specific aspects of the individual school, so I just wanted to say thank you.
You're welcome. We're going to do that every month.
Yeah, I like that. Thank you.
Good.
Lisa?
Okay. Two comments. I noticed that board member requests, my name is on there, and the way it's on there for some items and not others, I don't understand. If you're going to do that for all board member requests, I had also requested the update on the class sizes. So, if you're going to be using my name, use it on everything I request, or let's just not include board member.
Well, the class size was going to be on there anyway. It was part of my report, Lisa, so that's why I didn't reference your name, because I was going to do that anyway.
Okay. Well, then, if you're going to be doing that again, if you're not going to include my name on everything I request, I would prefer you just didn't include it and just say, you know, board member request. The other thing is on J, or I apologize, on the support staff under.
What number or letter, please?
Two.
I'm sorry?
Under C2, we talk about the support staff, and the general population is under the impression that support staff includes all support staff in this district. So, could you clarify for them what group of individuals that includes?
Sure. The support staff. The support staff was identified as part of their agreements with the board in the past, and it has pretty much remained the same. They are the assistants to, well, many of the people who work here in Bliss, I'll use that as a general term, the technology, most of the technology staff, though not all, and I think that's it. It roughly numbers about 30, 35 people.
Okay.
It's not clerical, it's not EAs, it's a very specific group of people.
Right, and again, the general population is thinking support staff means everybody--
Good question.
--who supports, so thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you, you're welcome.
The other thing, just so the public is aware, the chart was corrected. It was incorrect in the packet where the custodial maintenance is, the 2011-12 should be .5%, and 1213 should be 1.5%. And again, that was corrected, it's just not--
Yeah, and I apologize for that. Somebody pointed that out to me, that we hadn't updated that. But the other part that was also updated was that it said 0% for 1314, for the four nonrepresented groups, and it should have said TBD, so that, we corrected that. And we'll post that on the website as well.
And again, like the request that I made about the numbers, I'm anxious to see what happens on the Third Friday count, so if we need to do something about the Madison and the other elementary school, 5th grade were prepared to do so, so thank you.
And if there are no other questions, I'm sorry, I apologize.
I just had one comment. I wanted to recognize, I guess it's under K2, I wanted to recognize PJ Jacobs and those teachers who have stepped up and indicated that they were willing to have those class sizes be a little bit larger, to allow for more students to have the opportunity to be involved with accelerated algebra. I know sometimes schools have arbitrary cutoffs, and especially in today's world where we're trying to encourage kids to focus in on math and science, I think it's wonderful that those teachers are stepping up to take on that additional class load.
Alex?
My question's on 13 transportation.
On what letter?
A letter, it'd be in G.
Oh, got it, okay.
13, I believe, transportation, does that sound right, or am I wrong?
Yeah, 13, I got it, last page.
A, the new buses are online, drivers and students are enjoying the quieter engines, smoother rides, and more passenger room. My questions on that are, I heard, I don't know if it's a fact, maybe you can clarify it for me, that we do not have any extra large, big buses at this point if one breaks down. We have to rely on the smaller buses. Any clarification?
Yeah, I don't know how many of the larger buses we have this year. Tom, do you remember how many we ordered, the larger buses?
I mean, even not the extended larger ones, but any large bus, as opposed to the smaller, shorter buses. If one of the large or largest buses break down, we don't have another large bus to replace that at this point. We're consuming all the buses for the routes every day.
I don't know that, but I can check on that.
I'm just worried about that.
But the other backup is LAMERS.
Okay.
So that is a sort of a failsafe safety net, but I will check on that and report back.
The one other thing with the larger new buses, I heard that the people who are operating them need two hours of training, but not everyone's getting this opportunity. Is that going to change in the future?
Two hours of training on what, Alex?
Before they can drive the new buses.
You've heard that they're not getting--
That only specific people have gotten this training, and not everyone has, so that if a field trip is planned, let's say, with a large bus, it limits the bus drivers who can apply for that route.
I'll find out about that.
Okay.
And the criteria that's used to train people.
Thank you.
All right.
I guess I just, I'll ask for clarification, because I'm a new Board Member, and this would be, to me, would be the perfect circumstance. If I, as a Board Member, have a question like yours, Alex, do I have the ability to call the Superintendent or the President ahead of time? Because I think it would be helpful if we, as Board Members, have questions that are those more clarification things, that we would contact Administration and ask them for the information. And if our questions aren't answered, or if we still have a concern with it, then we would raise it at the Board. But typically, where there's a question, especially where our written reports come out ahead of time, if we have clarifying questions that we just want background information on, I don't know if it makes sense for us to do it at the Board meeting. Again, I understand if we contact Administration and they can't answer our questions, or we're not satisfied with the answer, that we would raise it at the Board. But I guess I just suggest that, just kind of as a general matter of Robert's Rules, that we, as Board Members, should be expected to do our homework, and if we have a question about something, we should be doing our homework.
Kim?
Our homework starts, we get our packet at 6:00 PM on Friday. So we have Saturday and Sunday. They're not working, so possibly by Sunday afternoon, I thoroughly go through my packet. Monday morning, I'm at my own desk at my own job between 7:00 and 8:00 o'clock. If I do email them, they're sending me the email back. I get out of work at 5:00, I eat supper, and I'm here. So that's why I don't ask sooner, so.
You can email on the weekend.
I can, but I can't get the answer, so I have to ask anyway, so, but anyways, I appreciate that.
Some of these questions come up on the spot as we're re-reviewing the information.
Okay, I understand what it is. We can discuss what we want to do about that, but I think we've round-robin' enough on that guy. You have a couple of announcements for us.
I just do. Tomorrow, the WKCE, annual WKC score scores are going to be released, and we weren't able to distribute them to anybody except to the building principals. So what I'd like to do is to show you how we're going to do this tomorrow. Three, four, five, six, I have three for over there, and Amy, I'll have to get you one. So what's going to appear on the website tomorrow will be an opportunity for parents and community, whoever, to actually go to the link. Does everybody have one? Okay, to go to the link that shows that school's report card. So Sarah worked on this pretty extensively, I think, along with Brian and people from Technology. So the upper left there, you see the A+, our little logo, that's where the district score will be, and then if you click on that, it'll either take you to a hyperlink directly to the district, or it'll take you to the DPI site to our school or district, and then you can click on it there. Sarah was trying to make it a one-step process as opposed to two, so we'll see. And then, and each individual school, that's where their scores will be, and then you can either, again, do the same thing. Hit on that, it'll either go to a hyperlink directly to the school, or to the DPI to the school, and then you can click on that. So I just wanted you to be aware that this is part of our way of making it easier for parents and community members in the Board and so on to look at that information, okay? And it wasn't bargained until tomorrow. And I think there's some, we have a press release that is going to go out first thing in the morning. There's some really good news about our schools, hard work that has paid off and is going to continue to pay off, and I think everybody should be very, very proud about what they're going to see. There's always work to be done, but I want to focus on the positive rather than on the negative, and as far as I'm concerned, there aren't any negatives in that report. The other, two other things that I want to read to you, both are, I think, very heartwarming, and I think are just a testament to the kind of students that we have, the kind of staff we have, and the kind of parents and community that we have. Colton Doms, a district alumnus of 2014, was a Fernandez student in the PATH1 program. The PATH1 program, you may remember, is a credit-based program, and students receive a SPAS diploma, having earned 23 and 1/2 credits, and PATH1 program is in the Fernandez Center. In addition, Colton was a Challenge Academy student who incorporated an AmeriCorps experience with his PATH1 program and Challenge Academy, earning elective credits during second semester of the last school year. He is currently located in the Dunkalk Campus in Maryland, and his AmeriCorps experience was with the Habitat for Humanity and various locations of the Habitat for Humanity around the Baltimore area, and along with the environmental cleanup that took place in Baltimore. On Friday of last week, Colton was at the White House. He was invited there as a result of his work and personally met both President Barack Obama and former President Bill Clinton on Friday. He was sworn in as an AmeriCorps alumnus, and he will be automatically invited to any future ceremonies held relative to AmeriCorps, including those at the White House. So congratulations to Colton, and I thank him personally for his hard work, that he and Jerry Gargalak from the Alternative School, and I believe his counselor, worked to take his elective credits that he needed, second semester of last year. He was also at the Challenge Academy, second semester last year, and then found that program, AmeriCorps, in the Baltimore, Maryland area, did such a great job that he was invited to the White House, and what a great kudos for him. And you can actually see that, because they videotaped it. And the other--
Where's the link?
I can send that to you. I think, actually, if you go to AmeriCorps, I think you'll be able to find out, or AmeriCorps and White House, I think you'd be able to find it, if I can--
I think maybe we should have that on our district website, that link.
Yeah, good idea.
I think that's wonderful.
And if I could just make a comment about that. You and I both, and I can't remember who else, went to the Challenge Academy, Angel, you were there, and I got to meet him, and he was very, very happy to be where he was, and felt like he really belonged, and he was very enthusiastic, looking forward to the future. So that is really exciting, to see that he went forward, and with all that excitement, so.
He's still in Baltimore, and he's still working on the AmeriCorps program.
Yeah.
So it's great.
Awesome.
The other is a letter that the SPAS cross-country team received, the boys' cross-country team, from Officer Kristy Erns from the Stevens Point Police Department. And I really thought that this exemplified, first of all, what Don Benke, our SPAS cross-country coach, has been teaching for probably as close to 30 years as possible. But it also is a testament to the kids that we have in the district. I am often asked what I have seen between the differences between students here at Stevens Point and the other four districts that I've worked for in the suburbs of Illinois. And the first thing I always mention is, is that our kids are so, so very engaged. They're engaged in school, in their communities, they feel a sense of loyalty, and it's just, to me, it's the greatest part about working here in the district are the kids. So this was a letter from Officer Erns. "On August 26th, at 8:54 AM, I was driving through Buchholz Park in an attempt to locate a bicycle that had just been stolen. As I drove up to the State Park area, I observed many students who I believed to be the SPAS PJ Jacobs and Ben Franklin cross-country team. I was now on the south side of the lagoon area. The athletes began to cross the road, and there were so many, I was unable to drive, so I waited, which was not a problem. As more athletes noticed my squad car, they began to move to the sides of the road so I could get through. They lined both sides and were facing me. As I proceeded forward, all of a sudden, someone started clapping, and soon every athlete was clapping as I drove through the line. As I continued, I enrolled my window and thanked them. It is not often that incidents like this occur in law enforcement. I cannot express my gratitude that I have for the cross-country team and their actions. I believe this is a reflection of the excellent leadership and sportsmanship this team has. I am extremely proud to be a law enforcement officer in such a great community as Stevens Point. Good luck this season." That's it.
That was great, thank you.
Really nice.
May I ask one question?
Yeah.
On the report card, this will be on our website, what time tomorrow?
Good question. She may launch that tonight, after midnight.
Okay. She's that excited?
But it'll be there, it'll be there pretty early, I think.
And another question, then. The Fernandez Center is not on here.
It does not, it had an alternative rating, and it can't compare to the others, and so it doesn't get a score like the other ones do, neither does the Boston School Forest. So, yeah, those two are different.
Okay, thank you.
All right, then, we have Board Comments. Lisa Totten, closed session meetings.
Okay. Because the consent agenda that we will be considering right after this contains the statement that Ms. Totten recused herself because of a conflict of interest, but refused to leave the room, I am going to address and end this manner once and for all. At the August 25th Board Meeting, Meg Erler attempted to justify the position that I leave the room when I recuse myself. I did not respond at the time, because it was not a posted agenda item, and therefore not appropriate, in my opinion, to respond. Back in 2010, a similar argument was brought up. In order to clear the matter up, I contacted the Government Accountability Board, and an opinion was given that I have the right to stay in the room. I have since been told by Meg that she is aware of that opinion from the Government Accountability Board, and yet she claims that another opinion from our attorney overrides that opinion of the Government Accountability Board. The real issue, however, is that this Board continues to go into closed session way too often, and discusses issues that should not be done in closed session."
That's it. Next, we have the consent agenda. We need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
There's a mistake.
Yep, I have a typo in there. On the 8/27, page 2, the last vote that was taken, I have 76 voted yes, rather than just six. So I will correct that.
It's more than double. That's a lot.
I was wondering what you did there, Meg.
That's creative math.
We all have that circle, though.
So the correct one is six?
It is six, and I do have it corrected on the copy that would be signed by Angel and Trish.
Any other questions?
So would you like to make your motion with corrections?
I would. Move to approve the consent agenda with the corrections as noted.
Need a second? Everybody did. Okay, do we have any other comments or questions on the consent agenda? Roll call vote, please.
Well, I just want to ask, we're doing the whole thing, also with the recommendations for employment, correct?
Yeah. Okay.
Ms. Erler?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Shirk?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay, we're on to Business Services. The first thing we're going to do, I'm just going to remind people, when we hit every thing that has a committee head, we're going to allow that committee head to give a quick report on how the committee meeting went and what happened. So, Trish Baker, Business Services.
I will be brief, as almost everybody that took place, almost everybody in this room here was at that committee meeting, and so I don't think that it needs a whole lot of explanation. I will tell you, I feel, in light of all of the comments about citizen members, I was absolutely delighted to introduce our citizen member, somebody I've never met before, works at UWSP, Sue Crado, Crado, who's with us tonight, actually, coming to observe a meeting. And I've never met Sue before, but she comes with stellar qualifications to be on our committee, so I'm really pleased that she's there. I will tell you that we had a very lively, somewhat messy conversation, debate, discussion about custodial services and potential of reworking our custodial services contract with regards to housekeepers. I understand it was a messy conversation, messy discussion, I guess I should use the word discussion, but actually, I think it was fruitful, and I think that we heard from a lot of people, I heard, I think that we knocked around a lot of different ideas. Unfortunately, we didn't get to everything else that was on the agenda, and that is unfortunate, because the, one of the other things that's on the agenda that we did not get to was Policy 830. And we do need to address that, and Meg and I have talked about, both of our committees have to address that policy, ours from the business and hers from the policy, and we will get to that. But I think it was a messy discussion, but I thought it was a fruitful discussion with regards to the custodial contract.
That's why we have committees.
That's right.
Okay, we have two citizen members who have asked to speak to the next item. The first is Kurt.
Kurt Lepek, 127 Walkers Court, Stevens Point, Wisconsin. Life Skills Center's come up again. It's only taken a couple of years, and as I look around, there are five of you on this Board that have never really voted on it. Five of you were not here when Dr. Stevens presented this, and the initial thing was signed. What was initially shown to the Board and what we have now, it's like comparing an apple to a watermelon. Originally, it was a glorified duplex, students helping, just the ability to get the kids, the special needs kids, out in a space where they can have some, if they needed some free time or some space to get away, that's what it initially was. A bunch of misinformation was given. Again-- Again, it was $400,000. The reason there was a contingency fund that added to this is because of the simple math that I did and sitting in the commuting meeting, listening to how many square feet and the dollar per square foot figure that they had listed in the thing. So after having said that and having discussion meetings with, or just having meetings with some of the former board members about this, some of them were under the impression that they were going to get this great deal. And I says, "No, you're not going to get a great deal. If they're charging $136 or $137 a foot and it's X number of square feet, it's going to cost $550,000." Because of those comments I made, then there's the, there was an addition to the budget made. And I don't remember the exact wordings that was there. Then we had the issue that it needed to be done ASAP, right away. I've always come forward and said, "This is a perfect opportunity. We have capstone classes that are capable of doing this." I also have the background of working with Habitat for Humanity. I'm spearheading their project at this time. And we're going to be doing another one right across the street from SPAS. So if anybody feels like roofing, come on over. You can donate some time. I just think we're missing the boat on some of this stuff. And like I said, when we go from $400,000 to $850-plus thousand dollars, to close to $1 million, that's not what we voted on. That's not what we talked about. So I really think that we need to look at this. And I'm not against it, per se. I don't know what's the best thing to do with these kids. I don't know, I'm not an educator. And I spoke with one of the administrators outside. That's not, that's not my forte. I'm a builder, I'm a local contractor. I've been a contractor for 20-plus years. And I just think that there was ways to do this where we could get more bang for our buck. The other thing is, you know, we talk about budget constraints and stuff like that, and I've heard that numerous times. But it seems that we do have money. We did $2 million to do electrical upgrades. We did $750,000 to do an addition over to Plover Writing School. It seems like we do have money. And none of this stuff was done with a referendum. I don't know what the community thinks. I know what I think. I think we could do this cheaper. I think we could involve more students, and we could get this done. But again, five of you weren't even here when this was, when this was first brought to the board. And so I don't know if you know exactly how this was all presented and how it was all brought forward. I just, I want you guys to think about it before you spend taxpayers' money of eight. And again, they're going to tell me it's not taxpayer money because it comes from Social Security, if I remember correctly, from my conversation with Dr. Owens. But having the degree in economics, there is no such thing as a free lunch. There is no free lunch. That money comes from us somehow. Whether it's through your Social Security tax, or whether it's through your property tax, or whether it's through your federal or state income tax. It gets here somehow. So I just want you guys to be good stewards of the money that is provided to you guys. And like I said, being on the PWI board and spending millions of dollars, it's easy, but it's not your money. It really is. And we've spent a million-plus dollars already. And it's really easy to spend money when it's not yours. So just, please be conscious that somebody is actually paying for it, and it's the people that are in this community. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Can I just ask, are you suggesting that the kids that are in the shop classes and the tech classes that sometimes work on the Habitat for Humanity houses, are you suggesting that they would help to build the Life Skills Center?
They could. And having many discussions with the capstone teacher, and I don't remember the young man's name.
Brian Kosky.
Yes. Yeah, they could have done a lot of this stuff. They really could have. I don't know about now. I think it's become much more of a commercial building. I haven't seen a blueprint. But when it was a glorified duplex, yeah, the kids could have done a lot of this. And like I said, I take people literally. I had 15 people show up for Habitat for Humanity, and I ask them, "Has anybody got a hammer?" Not a one of them. "Anybody got tape?" "No." "Anybody know how to build a house?" "No." You can get, I got work done out of these people by showing them a few little things. So yes, the kids from school could do that. And like I said, the other thing is, a lot of these kids are going to go into the trades. We need carpenters, we need electricians, we need plumbers, we need cement finishers and concrete people. We also need draftspakers. And see, all that stuff could be experienced when you're a contractor is key. So if you can find somebody with a year of experience, you're way ahead of the game.
Thank you. Did I answer your question, Trish?
Yes, yes, it does. Thank you.
Uh, Reed?
Thank you, Mr. Lepek. Did a nice job. He's been following this matter closely, as have I. I've got the information here in your packet. He brings up a good point, that it is now 857. Ah, let's just round it off to 858. That's not what was presented to this board. And Trish Baker brought up at the last meeting, "Well, isn't there $400,000 that are set aside?" And Mr. Neon says, "Well, kind of, $400,000." And that $400,000, we're the original $400,000. This all started out as a $400,000 project. Where that $400,000 came from, that came from Medicaid. And it was given to the school system to reimburse the school for money that they used of local funds to fund the programs. Then they were given the $400,000 lump sum payment. Now, the proper thing to do, are you listening, Trish?
Yeah.
Would be to repay the, where the money came from. They don't have to. So that's where the $400,000 came from. Now, all of a sudden, Mr. Owens, I believe, is saying, "Gee, they just got another $2 million." I would assume that's from the same type of money. It's reimbursement for past expenses. And it could be spent on this, but it doesn't have to be spent, and it shouldn't be spent. Let's help these children, okay? I'm all for helping, he's showing. Last count, there was only 10 of these children. They're doing just fine where they are. The teachers, if you go up to and do your homework and visit these people, and they can talk freely, they'll tell you, they're already taking care of these kids and they're including them. Inclusion, not excluding them in a separate location, okay? This is not a good, good idea to be, you know. But we've got some people here that just want to spend money, and now it's way up to 850. And what they talked about, and somebody new board members he brought up, we're not there, they were going to see, after making some changes here, you know, going to make it smaller so they can come in less, they were going to see how the bids came in. Well, apparently, the bids come in way over, twice as much as they previously have. And, you know, what you should ought to do is make a motion. They want to action because they want to move along. And he said, "Let's hear, hey, you know, let's just, let's move ahead, just pass this thing, let's get going." No. The proper thing to do tonight is to make a motion to put this on hold. They're way over budget. You still, in addition, you are going to be talking, the super committee or the casualty committee is going to meet tomorrow night. And they are going to discuss what they're like to do. And one of them was, you know, there's great realignment, and boy, everybody's jumping on the bandwagon, $60 million bucks they want to spend, and they're going to come back in now, just for SPAS. You know, the proper thing would be to wait, you know, obviously, to wait before you start building something here, because if you do great realignment, you're going to move things around. And you could then accommodate, if you want to accommodate, the special ed, the special ed students, you could do it in the proper way during some reconstruction. I believe you'd probably have to do some reconstruction, but nowhere near $50 million to bring in the ninth-grade kids up to SPAS. That was way out of the ballpark. So once again, you know, and some of these other things that they were claiming they're adding, a culinary arts classroom, you know, and an additional meeting area for staff and families. To me, it'd be a fancy office for Mr. Winiger someday, okay? But what I'm suggesting is, you don't need all that kind of stuff for some special ed students. All they, what they said they needed was a little private spot where the students could go and practice, away from camp, you know, how to pour coffee and wash dishes and stuff like that. I visited their place. I know what they teach them in their little room and what they said they need. They don't need this elaborate thing with all these other things. And that's why it is, is how it goes here. Just keep adding things, and the price keeps going up. And we've got the money, and it came from Medicaid. You do some checking here. You do some checking here. You know, for $850,000, how many custodians could we hire? Over a dozen, for full benefits, living wages, and our own. So please, put this matter on hold.
Thank you, Reed.
Thank you.
Okay. Tom?
Good evening. Well, on your behalf, we continue the process to secure bids for the Life Skills Center. And as we mentioned, we would not know for sure what the cost would be until we completed the bids. And we assured you that we would not be moving forward with the project because that had to be your call, after hearing what the bids are and the funding sources, et cetera. Jim Jasper, who is the architect, is here this evening as well, should you have any questions. We've been through the Life Skills Center for quite a few years now, with one phase of it after another, going through the different questions and answers and cycles and whatnot, as well as through the city and the planning commission and their requirement to have the commercial appearance, et cetera, of the facility. We have always been involving the students. We did involve the students in the design class in the original creation and design of the facility. And in the bid, I did get confirmation and assurance from the Samuel's Group that our students in the trades class would be in used and be involved in the construction of the facility as well. Of course, we aren't able to turn over the full construction to the students. It's not possible in terms of time, as well as curriculum and whatnot, to do that. But that, as it may be, we have completed the bids. You have a copy of them in your packet. They're also online on the website. And they did come in. The bids came in at $787,074, when you include the percent and a half for payment performance bonds and the 7.5% contingency. That takes up to the $857,911, or $858,000. So we've written the recommendation such for the approval of that. And it's, that is entirely your call. If you want to, you want this project to continue, so be it. If you don't, so be it. But I would suggest that tonight's the night for the decision. Thumbs up or thumbs down, it's your call. Whatever you direct us to do, we will do.
Can I ask that, before we, just to give the board, there were some board members, obviously, that weren't here when we started the process, I think it was two years ago. If Greg could just explain the overall concept of the Life Skills Center again, to give a little bit more in-depth to the paragraph that's in there? Because there were some comments made that I think need to be clarified. Thank you.
Sure, absolutely. Good evening. Apologize, no tie today. I was in meetings in Wausau all day, so this is the way I look. At any rate, the Life Skills Center did begin a couple of years ago. It was born out of a number of SPAS teachers that came forward and said, you know, "We've got, we've got some great programs happening here at SPAS, but we're somewhat constrained. We have some limitations." And so as we had our discussion, they outlined the fact that we were doing great things up there. If you've ever been to the Blue Light Cafe, it's a wonderful, wonderful production that's put on by our special needs population. And if you'd like to learn more about that, I'd be happy to share more. We also have been renting an apartment across the street from SPAS for about the last 10 years. And in that apartment, we teach students with moderate to significant disabilities some of the skills that we have termed as life skills. Their cooking, their cleaning, their how to take care of yourself, how to manage an apartment, and just general life skills, hence the name. In addition to that, we have also started a program in the last couple of years known as Threads of Kindness. Threads of Kindness is a volunteer program by which our school social workers have a list of contributors, or people that have stepped forward that would like to donate resources, whether they are consumable materials for school, or they are new socks, or underwear, or clothes, or shoes, or coats, whatever the student in question may need. And so it wasn't long before all three of these ideas or concepts were married together. And the suggestion was, you know, originally, and this isn't reflected in any of the documentation, but it was part of our discussion, so I'll share it with you. Originally, we talked about taking a house that the district already owned and seeing if we could recreate that house into something that would serve as a resource and meet the needs of the district and ultimately, the needs of our students and families. However, that became an obsolete option because of older materials being used and hazardous products that may have to be removed from some of the older houses. And it just wasn't cost efficient. And so the conversation then became, well, let's build a duplex. And on one side of the duplex, we would have our life skills classroom move forward. And then on the other side, it would be a storefront. And from there, it kind of morphed yet again into an opportunity for our alternative students, our alternative school students, to participate in a classroom that would, once again, be closer to the SPAS main campus. But yet, away from the large crowds and all of the noise that perhaps contributes to some students' lack of success in that building. So it became also an opportunity for extended learning or distance learning, as it's now referred to. And so as that conversation developed, more and more people stepped forward and contributed to the discussion. And so, yes, it did, it definitely did start from something that was very different to what it's grown into. But I think, like any good idea, if you have a good idea and people grab onto that idea, and they're excited about it, they want to contribute to the conversation, and they want to contribute to the overall impact of such an idea. I need to tell you, though, that this facility, and specifically, our life skills classroom, serves more than 10 students, okay? We have students that are currently being excluded from that program because the apartment is too small for students in wheelchairs to navigate with the number of students that are on that caseload. So, you know, in Stevens Point, we're very proud of the fact that we offer a world-class education. I think this is a tremendous opportunity for us to demonstrate to the rest of Wisconsin, and certainly to our community, that we want to offer a world-class education to students with disabilities. Thank you.
We have- Yep.
I was going to ask how dire the need for this type of building is at this point, but you kind of pointed out the size of wheelchairs are not accommodating to what we have at this point. Is there a time constraint that we have to have some kind of update, maybe with what we have, to make the, to adopt, or adapt, excuse me, for these types of chairs? Or as far as completion of this building, is it needed now, or what's the timeframe?
Well, the need, I think Greg would say is, we had this need several years ago. It's what prompted this, and we've been working with this. You, the board, the community, teachers, and staff have been working to bring it to this point this evening for a couple of years now. And is there a time constraint? I guess that's a matter of opinion among those that feel it's very needed and not much of a time constraint for those that don't feel it's important. I guess that unfortunately is going to fall on your shoulders to decide what you want to do. We've gone out for bids, we've held the bids since the opening. If you don't act this evening, and I don't know what you would do if you don't act. If you kill it, you kill it. But if you delay it, then that creates all other kinds of issues and problems. But if you delay it, then that creates all other kinds of issues and problems again. And now we've got to figure out, well, how long do the bids last? Probably several vendors won't hold them another 30 days beyond what they've already held. So, there's a possibility we may have to bid, rebid portions of it, if that's your choice, in which case, we don't know if the cost will come higher or be the same or be lower. And the longer you wait, obviously, the probability of them being higher is likely, but I don't know what would happen.
One more question. I'm sure you're in communication with the teachers of these programs. And can you summarize their feelings about this need of the building that is being presented?
I would have Greg do that.
Okay.
I can tell you that if you, and you're certainly free to do this, have conversations with the special education teachers at Spash, and they will tell you that, as Tom has already articulated, we needed this building years ago. And the thought behind the original building was that rather than throwing money towards a rental and not having any return, was that this building was going to be an asset to the district for years to come and serve our students well.
Yeah, Alex, you asked a really good educational question when you said, you know, is there a, what is the timeline or urgency, my word, not yours? In the beginning, we had really wanted to get it going very quickly so that we did not lose the opportunity to teach kids who would otherwise be farther behind than our regular education population. And there are opportunities for the students that Greg identified beyond age 21 or 22. However, we know that the more in-depth we can give those kids in particular before they leave us, the better off that they will be. The regular population of students have opportunities and abilities and skills that they can develop, and those opportunities are greater because they have greater capacity With every, I just use with every year that goes by that we don't have a facility like that, we are, and I don't mean this in the way it's going to sound, but the other word just escapes me right now. We are denying a group of kids who desperately need a deeper education in order to survive beyond our walls. We only have really 12 years. And then kids have the next 70, 80 years. And with every year that we don't do something to help kids achieve, we've lost an opportunity. These kids in particular are losing much greater opportunities without a facility that can give them those kinds of opportunities. So, the urgency is one of not giving kids who are leaving us those opportunities so they can be better prepared.
Right.
All right, we have two recommendations. Yep. I'm not quite sure where to start with this, because I've been on the board the whole time this has been. And I'm sure some of the other board members that have been sitting here says, here she goes again. I am not against the Life Skills Center or the program. Program's been around for years, longer than most of us on the board, except maybe for Chris. But we've been, it's been here for years. We helped and have helped a lot of students through it. Small apartment, yes. Handicap accessible, yes and no. It's ground level. Can you get a wheelchair and move it around in there? No. But I believe it's what any high school, college, new person moving out's apartment's going to look like. My kids have lived in smaller apartments when they have gone to college. I, again, just go through, I am not against the program. I am against this whole Life Skills Center, the way it's been pushed down our throat, misinformation, miscommunication. Hurry, 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 we've got a timeline. Two years later, we have not broke ground on this project. I believe we need to take it off the table and relook at it. We do not need, and I'm going to round up, a million-dollar building that may house, help, 50 students. I'm going to round it up from 10 to 50 students. We have a lot of students in our district, and I'm going to put them in the middle, that are in big classrooms, that they don't get a chance to talk to their teachers because the teachers don't have the time to sit down and mentor our students anymore. That's where we need to be putting a million dollars into our whole school, not to 50 students. If we want to go with the Threads of Kindness, the Blue Light Cafe, and an apartment building, I'm for that. Let's figure it out how we can do it, and we can have our tech students or, I apologize, our trade students do that. They've built houses before. I've been around where they've built houses before. I know some administration thinks they can't do it. I will put my name that they can do it. If they have the right teacher, the right people from our community, and we had five to 10 builders in our area come and speak, we could get more donations. This is how this started. Somebody was going to write a grant to update or rebuild a duplex. A million dollars later, I just cannot justify going from $100,000, $500,000, and now $858,000 to build a building. We have a professional kitchen in our school. Yes, would some of our chefs around in the area like to work in a specialty one, all up to date? Yeah, sure. But we don't need it. It's not a need. A local meeting area for outside agencies located on a north side of town? We have a partnership with Sentry. Let's talk to Sentry about it. They have conference offices. They have meeting buildings there. We don't need it. We can't afford it. We can't afford to pay, to give, to even settle contracts with our staff because we can't afford it. We have to look into the future. I believe, as good board members, if we want to do it, let's take it to a referendum. Let's ask the community if they want this. I don't think we should do it.
Anyone else have any? Lisa?
Actually, I have a number of them. But when I look at these bids, there's a lot of labor contract amount that say zero, including our sewer system. So, if we're not providing water and sewer to this facility, how does that work? I mean, there is no cost associated to it on the project.
Obviously, there would be water and sewer. You want to speak to that? I'll let the architect speak to that. Jim Jasper is his name, by the way, to remind you, from Samuel's Group.
Good evening. Jim Jasper with Samuel's Group. You had specific question to water and sewer on the site?
If you look at the summary, there's a number of columns that, actually rows, that have zero for a dollar amount in the bid. We have the concrete reinforcement, synthetic fiber reinforcement. And if there's, I mean, I would assume they're listed as a description of work because we need those items.
Yeah.
So, to have them listed and yet not have a dollar amount for them seems sort of odd.
Yeah, and if you look to the sub under there, or say what division or what bid those were included in, specifically to your point on synthetic fiber reinforcement, if you look under sub, that would be included with the 031100 category. And if you did want to look at bid breakdowns, the administration was given all the bids so you could see why some were qualified, some were not qualified, whether they're providing the insurance or responding to the bid that was requested of the trade. So, there is additional information. I don't know if that makes sense as far as when some of those were zeroed out, they are maybe summed up with another category above or below.
Then I guess that's all I need from you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
The other thing, one of the other things this board needs to keep in mind is tomorrow, the Consolidated Task Force is getting together again to work on our final draft of recommendation to the board. And part of the reason this has taken so long is because of the fact that we have been waiting for their recommendation before we move forward. So, that's something I want you all to keep in mind. The other thing, if, Bill, can you come up? And I just want people to understand, could you come up to the mic? People to understand how the funding goes. And I'm going to explain it the way I understand it, and if I say something incorrect, if you can please correct me. But we have our Fund 10, which is our general fund.
Yep.
We have federal mandates of programs that we need to run for our special needs students.
That could be, I saw.
Okay, we have fed requirements.
Yep.
Okay. And let's just say, for argument's sake, that that costs the district $100 a year. Just argument's sake, okay. So, we are reimbursed from the federal government 25 cents, we'll just say 25 cents, for every dollar that we spent.
Okay.
Okay. So, the other 75 cents, who funds that? How is that paid for?
It's funded by Fund 10.
Okay.
Which is, which is a combination of tax dollars, state aids.
Well, it's all tax dollars.
Right.
Yeah, okay. So, when we do not get enough reimbursement from Medicaid or whatever federal source, we take funds out of our general operation 10, our operating funds, to cover the shortfall.
Correct.
Okay. So, when we found out, or the federal government found out or realized that they, whether they made an error, changed their reimbursement amount, we did our due diligence, applied for those funds, and they gave us more money back to cover our operating expenses, or they gave the money back to the district, reimbursed us at a higher level.
They increased their reimbursement from what they had originally gave us.
Correct. Okay, so now we have this, this extra pool of funds. Now, what I think Reed was trying to say is, because we took those funds from our Fund 10 operating to cover the shortfall in Fund 27, that now that reimbursement, instead of being used for capital projects, which, you know, from what I understand, there are no restrictions as far as how we spend that money.
Correct.
Is that correct? Okay. So, I believe what Reed is trying to point out is that we can use those funds as a capital project, we can leave them in Fund 27 as operating, to cover operating expenses so that it does not as much need to come out of Fund 10 to cover the shortfall. Or, we could take those funds and stick them back into the Fund 10 to cover operating expenses, essentially to do just what he said, reimburse the operating expense, the local funds for operations.
Fund 27 operates on a fiscal basis, period.
Okay.
At the end of every fiscal year, we have a deficit.
And Fund 10...
And Fund 10 has to cover the deficit.
Yes.
So, it's not like we can, whatever is short and gets reimbursed later, doesn't, you know...
Right, it doesn't matter. Fund 10 has to cover it.
Yep.
Yes, okay. So, I just want to make sure that the general population and the board understands that those funds are actually funds that are being reimbursed because the federal government did not reimburse us at a high enough level. So, we can use those funds anywhere we want. We can wait until the Consolidated Task Force comes back. We can go to referendum, let the people decide. There are multitude of different things. That being said, the other thing is, I did do exactly what Greg had said, talked to the teachers. And what the issue is, is that the apartments are not wheelchair accessible. So, those students are not being serviced because they can't get into the facility. I also talked to some other community members where in the past, and this was before my time, and Chris, I'm not sure if you were on the board or not, but there was a relationship with the YMCA where the district needed some things to be done, and we worked with them for them to take care of that. So, I mean, this million-dollar project or $858,000 project could actually be used if we, I mean, we could consult with the owners of the apartment building and say, "Okay, we will fund modifying an apartment to make it handicap accessible. Will you allow us to do that? We can have our students help." I mean, there's plenty of things we can do at a fraction of a cost. And when we're saying we need money and we're always worrying about sustainability, and these funds don't have to be used for anything in particular, I just would like us to really think about that and, again, for the Consolidated Task Force results to come in.
Chris?
Couple things. I think that, I understand and believe that every board member is doing their due diligence. And I don't always agree, but I have to say, there was a movie called Groundhog's Day, and I feel like this is déjà vu again and again and again and again. There are students, staff, and people that have been waiting for us to come to a decision regarding this for a number of different reasons. It's been over two years. I had one of the special ed parents ask me if the obstructionists are going to continue till they finally stop this from happening. One of the things that we're going to be talking about this evening is having a superintendent versus the office of the superintendent. And I heard board members say...
Hang on, I'm going to stop you. Can you stick to this?
This is related, okay? I heard board members say that obviously, they believe that all of the professionals that we have would be able to do the job. However, I'm listening and have been listening for two years, and all of our professionals come forward and say, "We believe this is something that our students need with their professional knowledge." And I have heard a number of board members suggest all different options. And I'm not saying they're wrong or right. But I want you to think about that when we have professionals who come together, not just one, not just Greg or Attila or Tom, all of the people who came together to put this together. But we somehow, some of us, say the same thing again and again and again because we're not really for this. We have a better way of doing it. I'm not a professional educator, and I do have a tremendous amount of respect for every board member's opinion, but we hire professionals to come forward for our students, for our staff, and for our district. And I think it's really a shame that we keep beating this down until somebody will get exactly what they want. And we've hired professionals to tell us, "We believe this is the best use for those students." And it really saddens me, because I've been at all the meetings where it went to the city council, it went to the different places, that it needed to go, but we can change it. We can change the location, we can change the funding, we can change the place. I'm sorry, I'm going to support this for those students because I think it's waited long enough. And I guess we can put it off forever for people who don't want to support this. I'm not going to. I'm not going to put it off.
Okay.
Angel?
Yes.
Personally, I do want to support this, but my experience in knowing the common practice of this board, do items of this large amount in cost usually go to referendum? Because I'm for it, but should we not make sure that is the consensus of the people?
Judge?
So, I guess I have to say, I'm kind of caught between a bunch of different thoughts here in that I'm a new board member. I've been on the board for six months. I've heard about this project for, I don't know, more than a year because I've been coming to board meetings for way more than a year. And quite frankly, I'm really supportive of it, but I don't know much about it. I was hoping tonight, and I guess I'm going to agree with Kim a little bit in talking about the... about the packets. I got my electronic packet on Sunday, reviewed it on Sunday. I got my paper packet today at noon. And I feel like I don't know enough about this to make an $858,000 decision. It's not that I'm not supporting it, it's that I don't know enough about it. And I haven't had enough time, really, I've got my packet, I've had this information here, which is really the most information that I've gotten since I've been on the board. I've had all of it for really about 24 hours. And I'm very, very uncomfortable making a decision this large on just this little bit of information. I want to go and talk to the teachers, I want to take Greg up on his offer of going and talking to the teachers, and I want to see the floor plans, and I want to know a little bit more about this. So I am going to make a motion, and I hope somebody will second me. We have a meeting on September 29th. I would like to put this off for two weeks, not to kill it, but rather to allow, at least myself, I'm not going to speak up for the other new board members, but I need to do my due diligence, I need to learn more about this, so that I feel more comfortable either spending $787,000, or, I'm sorry, $858,000, either spending that or saying, "No, we need to scale back." I feel like I just need to do that. I would be irresponsible to make a decision on this with just this limited information that I have at this point. So I'm going to make a motion to simply put this off, to postpone this until our September 29th board meeting. I'm hoping somebody will second that.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Discussion?
Yep.
Okay.
No, you go ahead.
Okay. I like that. I like that we have this opportunity, that we all should take a look at the building that exists now that's being used, and talk to the teachers, because it'll be obvious to us it needs to be done, or it doesn't. Thanks.
Thanks.
I guess before I could vote to approve or disapprove that motion, I would need to know with respect to the timeline, what that does in terms of if we're looking to break ground, or whatever, if that would be the case. I started, I guess, with what our mission statement and purpose is, and that is that we prepare each student to be successful. I have spent most of the years, and I know this program's been going on about 10, maybe a little bit more, I'm not exactly sure, but I've spent those years watching the many families in this community with students in this program. And frankly, I've watched them received, receive an incredibly limited program. The facility's been inadequate, I believe from a district perspective, the programming's been adequate. Now, I will admit that for some students, there just is incredible need in terms of their future. But I've seen many, many of our families really work with their students, and our school district work within the constraints that this facility and this program has to best prepare these students for the future. But as we saw the other day at the Educational Services Committee meeting, this is not about anymore an apartment and teaching people how to live within an apartment. It's about teaching all of our students, providing all of our students with the training, the experience, and the opportunity to learn what their skills and abilities are, to be able to work with those while they are within our schools, and to be able to look to chart a realistic course for the future. And I don't believe that our school system with the facility that we've had, that frankly doesn't even allow the full number of students in there, and wheelchairs, you know, frankly forget about it. I also want to point out, this isn't about 10 kids, and it's not about 30 kids, and it's not about 50 kids. It's about our kids moving forward within this district for many, many, many years, and having a facility that's adequate to provide them with the programming, the individualized programming that they need, just as we provide all of the rest of our students, you know, who are high achievers, who are low achievers, who are interested in college, who are interested in technical school. And we are doing our best to create a curriculum. This is not just about a building. This is about creating a curriculum for these students, as well as for these students to work in partnership with our existing students. We heard at the Educational Services Committee meeting the other day about an incredible grant that our staff has been able to win. We're one of the few districts in this state where we are going to be partnering with one employer to allow a small number of our students to be able to experience on-the-job training, on-the-job experience, for them to develop, for them to explore, for them to experience what their skills and abilities are. So I am very much in favor of this project. I am willing to vote on it tonight. I think it is an investment for our district. It will move us forward into a future that special needs education is going to require. I mean, it's what's coming down the road, it's what is going to be expected of us, and it's what we should expect of ourselves, because we should be preparing each of our students to be successful, not just within the classroom, but when they move beyond our walls, and they move out into a world that, for this population, frankly, has provided them with significantly less opportunities than they are capable of providing in the workplace.
So, can I just ask Jim? Jim, Jasper? If this were to be moved to September 29th, do you have time to break ground this fall and get this going, so that it can still be accomplished this school year?
I believe we'd be able to break ground, and the goal would be to try to break ground sometime in November, to get footings and foundations in and beat frost. We had a horrible winter last winter, and I guess the same is coming again, if you believe Farmer's Elmanac. And they'd be kind of latest, we'd want to definitely do the concrete and site work pre-freeze this winter, and if we can do that, we can get things enclosed, and the conditions wouldn't be great in as far as tenting and that kind of stuff, and providing heat, but it is doable. We do have to deal with those conditions all the time.
Okay. Kim?
I just want to finish my comments. I just would, I just would ask that we, as school board members, as we're going on and we're talking with the teachers, as we're looking at the existing facility, if that's what we intend on doing, if we're looking to talk to our administrative staff about this, I'd also encourage you to talk to some parents who have had their kids involved with these programs. And I'm sure Greg would be able to provide you with some of you don't know of people. But I encourage you to look at this as something beyond a physical building, and look at this as what it will do to provide opportunities now and for the future, opportunities that maybe, you know, right now, we've got a list of, we think we can do this, this, and this within this building. I can guarantee you, once that building's up, the students start working within there, staff, our staff, they're going to come up with an incredible number of additional opportunities to use that facility to help this group of students be able to succeed within our schools, as well as to succeed in the world beyond. Thank you.
Yes.
I guess the difference between Groundhog's Day, Bill Murray woke up every day, and it was the same thing. It didn't cost us another additional $100,000, another additional $300,000. So it was, it is kind of like it. And again, I'm not against the Life Skill Center, the apartment, the Threads of Kindness, and the Blue Light Cafe. Okay? There's reasons that I would give for that. I'm not against that. I know parents that have used it. When this first came out, I had parents come up to me that I worked with, said, "I love the program. It's working. It worked for my child. It worked for this child." And they came up and talked to me about it. Why do we need to change it? I went and looked at the apartment when we first started talking about it. They took the board over there, and yes, the new one, new members need to. Chris, I don't appreciate that, just to let you know. So someone, they want to put the camera on her.
No, we're not going to do arguing.
So I want to agree that the...
Do you have something new to say?
No, I just want to say, I'm going to repeat myself, and yes, I am, that I'm not against the Life Skill Center. Let's make the center, not everything else that goes with the ball of wax. Okay?
Yes?
I just want to clarify, Meg, that I believe our teachers have done a wonderful job with our students. There have been limitations, because again, the apartment is not wheelchair accessible. But to say that we have provided them subpar, and I'm paraphrasing what you said...
You're not, you're not paraphrasing what I said.
Okay, then what did you say?
Because that's not, that is not what I said.
Okay, then what did you say?
What I said is that I believe that the current program is inadequate for the students, and that our staff has worked very hard and has done a wonderful job within the constraints of the facility that we as a district have provided them.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Okay. We have a motion and a second on the table. The motion is to make this decision September 29th, giving new board members time to speak to teachers and view the current facility. Obviously, that's not all in the motion I'm adding. Will you please read the motion as Trish presented it?
To postpone the decision regarding the Life Skills Center to the September 29th meeting.
And it has been seconded by Chris? Okay. Roll call vote, please. I have a question.
Sure.
I'm assuming that board members are not ready to vote tonight? Can I assume that? Because if they are ready to vote tonight, I'm happy to remove my second.
I'd like to say I'm ready to vote tonight.
I'd like to remove my second, then.
And I will replace her second, because I believe it's only the fair thing to do for the new board members.
Well, could I, since we have a motion and a second again, for me, either way, I am going to vote yes on this. So tonight or next week, it doesn't matter to me, it's, for me, it's a yes.
Okay. The motion is to move this to the 29th. There is a second. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Earler?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
No.
Ms. Sherrick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to one.
Okay. I tried very hard to be generous, giving you all the time you needed to comment on this. I'd like everybody to please come ready to vote next time. We're not going to take 45 minutes of a board meeting up discussing it again, we are going to go to a vote. So just being clear about that. And new members, I know, the teachers are so open and helpful. You can come and sit and watch them and spend a day, it's really fun, it's very enjoyable. I did it, too. Approval of monthly bills.
Move approval, second.
Okay. Any discussion? Yep.
I want to let everyone know I'll be voting no, because I do not believe that the district should be paying for cabinet meeting mileage off-site. Cabinet meetings should be onsite here.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Oh, Kim's not in the room. We'll just, well, we'll do a roll call vote.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Earler?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
No.
Ms. Sherrick?
Skipper for now, yeah, and then if it makes a difference, we'll...
Oh, it doesn't.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, we are on...
Six to one with one not present.
Thank you. We're on Educational Services. Before we go there, I'm going to, I think we're at about a five-minute break spot, so if we could please take one, that means be back at quarter till, quarter till nine? Okay, we are back, and we are on Educational Services. The first thing we'll have is a committee report from Chris Scott.
Oh, my gosh, that's me. You're on. I was almost not prepared, I'm almost prepared. Okay. So the Education Services Committee met on September 9th. I'd like to thank the new community members. It was a great meeting, I was very excited, we had a lot of information, the titles on some of the items were celebrating students, and those were anecdotal comments about some of the things going on with our students. And also, we're going to change that, as someone recommended that we also celebrate the staff. So that'll be new, it'll be celebrating students and staff. One of the things we talked about was the great presentation that the students gave at the opening of school, and also our new calendar, district calendar, with the wonderful art that they had. We had a three-minute video, which I requested, explaining the Common Core State Standards. The video was shown at a workshop that we attended, and it just gives a real basic understanding, because obviously, our staff is very much involved in the core curriculum, and so, that was a presentation. Most of the items on our agenda that evening were presentations. We had a presentation on the educator effectiveness, looking at practices and objectives and goals, with the idea of continual improvement for our students. And one of the questions is, how will teachers, educational specialists, and principals' performance be assessed? So that was really interesting. We had, Meg mentioned the grant that was in the governor's budget, and we were very, very fortunate to receive that grant. Century Insurance will be working with a vocational service agency, training for eight of our students to have a employment there, and it'll be career and exploration. So very, very proud of those students and Century, thank you very much. We had an agenda item of the curriculum adoption cycle. That cycle now is a five-year cycle, but with a number of discussions between principals and administrators, and there's been quite a, let's see, how did I put this? A number of changes in standards and accountabilities, and they're looking at moving that to possibly a six-year cycle, but that's going to come back to the committee after they get this all put together. Instructional leader compensation, which was sent to us by Human Resources, and is coming back to Human Resources again, but we had a discussion about that. That is, in its third year, I believe, and that will be looked at at the end of the third year. Talking to Dave, Dave, can't think of your last name?
Lockett.
Thank you. Dave Lockett, that is proceeding really well, and we're really happy to have that discussion, because I know there were some concerns when staff presented to us. So, one of the things that I would like to do is invite parents to our committee and to all the committees. If you'll look on our website, you can tell, if you go to the School Board Calendar, it'll list all of the committee times and dates. And there were not any parents at this committee, and I feel like Educational Services is the committee where elementary, secondary, and pupil services, the services that are provided for our students, the what, the why, the how, are discussed, and I think parents would really gain a lot of knowledge, and we'd love to see you there. So our next meeting is on the website, because I don't have the date, sorry. So our next meeting is on the website because I don't have the date, sorry.
Okay, thank you. All right, Student Services, School Health Services Agreement. It's an action item. It's in your packet. Greg, do you have anything to add? All right. We have a recommendation. Oh, yes. Where is the contract?
I didn't get mine either.
It's right, it's here. Right. Let's see.
Without being able to have knowledge of the contract, I am not prepared to vote on this tonight.
How is it attached? Okay. Where is yours, Meg?
No, I don't have it.
You don't? Okay.
So did anybody get it?
I don't think so.
So, can I make a motion to postpone this until the 29th if need be, or to the next board meeting before, so we can see the contract?
I'll second that.
Attila, in Greg's absence, are there any consequences to putting this off for two weeks?
No, it's an annual contract. It comes before the board every year. It was in the file to be signed. There's another one, though, that, the inter-agency agreement, was that part of the packet?
Nope. The next one either way didn't receive.
I didn't get that either.
Can I make copies and come back to this later in the meeting?
I need time to read.
We can postpone these two until the 29th.
Okay. Can I, should I amend my motion to postpone 9C1 and 9C2 until, are we going to say September 29th?
That's the next board meeting, right?
Well, that's supposed to be a workshop, but...
Yep, or second board meeting if we need it. I've got a list going, so sure.
So we can receive the attachments?
And I'll amend my second to support that.
Roll call vote, please.
Just a second. Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Earler?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Can I just go on a favor, Madam Chair? John Chari, who's the county sheriff, has been here all night waiting for the last three items. The, under General G1, A, B, and C, I was wondering if the board could address those so he could go home.
Yep, a board member said the same thing. Amy, can we just adjust, since the...
Well, yeah, the only thing, oh, yeah, policies aren't, yeah.
Since, I mean, since it's approved, can we just move it? All right, so what we're going to go do right now is we're going to move to G, General. There are three memorandum of understanding, and...
I'll be glad to take any questions about them. They're all identical as the cover memo indicates, except for the entities.
Any questions? Okay, then...
I do.
Oh, yes.
It's basically not the, this is going to be approved, but I just want to know, or if you can help me out, how often do we have dogs or drug dogs on the site for our high school and junior high? I don't know if that's a question for you or him, or if you can get back to me.
Well, it wouldn't be the county sheriff. We do it at a regular schedule, but it's never announced, for obvious reasons.
Right.
So, yes, they're regular.
I mean, can you just roughly say how many times a year? I mean, do we believe we should do it more often? I guess that's what I'm trying to get at, and I'm hearing that from the students itself, that it's something that should be done more often.
It's done several times a year.
Okay. That's all.
Okay, I need a motion? Do you need them separately? Do I?
They're all listed as one line item.
You can do them all in one. I simply put them in three, so in case the board wanted to do them one at a time, you know, it's...
I think you can do them all together.
I would move to approve, A, the memorandum of understanding with the county sheriff's office, B, the memorandum of understanding with the Stevens Point Police Department, and C, the memorandum of understanding with the Village of Pullover Police Department.
Second. Sorry. Any other questions? All right, roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Earler?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you, John, for staying. Appreciate it.
Have a good evening.
Sorry, we could have done that a while ago. Good night.
Sign these. Do you have copies for signature? I mean, I do, but...
Yeah, the only copies I have are the...
Okay, so let's go back to, technology didn't have anything, Human Resources Committee Chair Report.
I guess I didn't know I was supposed to have a report, so I will come prepared next time with it. And in your speech, Angel, you wanted to know what upcoming agenda items are. We could probably give you a small list, but since we meet, you know, the week before, we usually have agenda items that are added. But I will try to have that ready for at the next meeting. All I want to say is that I cannot have citizen members or a student rep on my committee. They don't allow it on the HR, but otherwise, everybody is invited, staff, students, and community members, to come and speak or email me items that they would like to discuss. I can't guarantee how long it would take to get on there, but I will do my, do I want to say due diligence or force to get it on? So, please, please come and visit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and our meetings are October 6th for mine, and the other ones are October 7th, so, okay.
Reed, you asked to speak. Do you want to speak now or after Meg's report?
I want to speak now because you made a comment earlier on this topic, how great the committees were operating. It was just, you and I were the only people in the audience, and the chairman of the committee, Ms. Earler, even admitted that this was confusing numerous times. So I said, I thought I was confused. The members on the committee were more confused than I was. In addition, that meeting was, Mr. Ebel was put on that as an emergency because Mr. Kokonoski wasn't present, which leads into the next thing. When the board did finally get the three members of this committee, started to meet, I even commented at that time that they were trying to recreate history and redoing motions that had already been done in nine people. I said, what three people are doing here, and Christine Scott was one of them eagerly doing it on that committee, is changing a bunch of items. And first, I also brought up the fact, I brought up the committee member situation that's not being done properly, and it should be done properly, okay? And, you know, I was one of those that told you it wouldn't work. You tried it once, it failed, it's going, it'll fail again, okay? Because it's not being done properly. And by the way, you can put Fink and Hetzel on that committee because they applied for that position to be on a committee, the same time you were chosen by these people to run, and they, unlike you, ran for office. So if anybody should be on a committee, they asked a long time ago to be on a committee, and you have two spots available. In addition, you know, the School Board Legal Counsel and Auditorium, two meetings ago, we went to this big exercise in hiring a law firm, new law firm. Presley was the big one pushing that one. I'm sorry he's not here tonight. That, why? Because we're spending so much money on people contacting their attorney all the time, the superintendent, the president of the school board, who, name it else. And I brought up the fact that your president, the one you're working with right now, only provides for the superintendent. I brought that up at the meeting. Well, it looks at you and says, "How come Angel Faxon's breaking the rules all the time by contacting the superintendent?" But that's okay when president breaks the rules. Only when I talk over five minutes, that's the only rule that you ever force around this board. When you break them, it's okay. So I just want to point that out. Now they added, the president can contact them. I think it should be with board approval. How else are you going to save money? That was the whole idea of changing law firms. The other committee that needs to be looked at is this big exercise with Shibley and everything, one of the best school board members that I've ever seen. Unfortunately, she's not here, and I hope she's doing, improving. But it was, they took, why, the agenda preparation. They took the superintendent off because of the fact that this board couldn't trust the superintendent. They couldn't get things on the board, and so they, so he's, you know, not supposed to be working, you, the board is supposed to be running this board, and it's recommendations by the board. No, he didn't like that. In fact, why, why did they have the superintendent on the policy committee, sitting right on the darn committee here, making, suggesting motions, making, asking questions? He was like running the damn meeting. Let me tell you, even under your warped sense that you make the policy, he's supposed to enforce it...
Hey, Reed, you're pushing buttons. Be careful.
Yeah, well, I'm pushing buttons because somebody has to say it because that meeting wasn't filmed, and so no one knows that you, they did, they redid all of the previous motions. They added now, and now the superintendent says, "I want this changed," so now it's, the agenda packet is the vice president, the president, and the superintendent. Previously, it was recommendations. You fought real hard to get that in there. Now they wanted to take that out and put back in, so, and the superintendent says, "I wrote it down." Oh, it doesn't give him shared leadership, and, you know, and it's a chilling effect, he says, and it's not free-flowing. And then Christine Scott came in and said, "Oh, it's not accurate, not truthful, not the way it's done. You can do it any way you want." See, that's what happened, and Meg Earler says, "Oh, I like to see the rules real general. That might work in the ideal world." This isn't the ideal board. If you've been following a board, did you see that they were deemed, they deemed themselves dysfunctional? Hello? That's why this all came. You people run, new people don't know what happened in the past, and if you don't understand history, you're going to repeat the same, you know, mistakes you did in the past, and here you go again. That policy committee is rewriting all of these rules that you spent a lot of time, and it's so balled up. I mean, I got more stuff, they got packets and packets, written stuff here, you got stuff with chicken scratching on, apparently Lisa Totten wrote all over this one, and then you said it was okay? Why is Lisa Totten, when she's not on the board, on your committee, she's just like me? But it's okay for her to add all this stuff, talk at will? It's okay for the president? You know, see, this is how this board operates. I take the time, I do my homework, I come to every meeting, that's more than what you people do, and then you cut me off. I know what I'm talking about. I care about this school system, but I don't like you guys, the way you're running things. You don't follow the rules, but you expect that I have to follow your rules, but you don't? Hello? And then the good board members, Sherrick, Totten, you know, then you don't fight enough. You got to fight. And then the next election, maybe we'll get some, you know, a couple more members like you to get this thing settled out. We need people here to fight for what's right, and then maybe we can start talking about educating our students, so we don't have to spend $958,000 to accomplish certain things. Let's get real here. Let's read these packets. Let's get those meetings filmed. Better yet, go back to the system. It hasn't saved any time. Go back to meeting three times a month.
Thank you, Reed. Okay, Chair Report, Meg Earler.
Chair Report. I will, pursuant to the school board policy, will be looking to appoint two citizen members to the committee for the October meeting. All of the applications are available for all board members to take a look at. Again, the policy, as Kim Sherrick pointed out, officer's committee chair. And I don't want to leave the superintendent out. I can't remember. I got to make sure because I have it held up because it will, it will...
No talk, Reed.
It will be followed. Board officers, the superintendent, and chairpersons of the standing committee shall appoint board members and citizens to the standing committees. So I will be working with the appropriate people to select the best qualified candidates for the committee. I did pass out a written report very briefly. I want to point out for the record that Superintendent Winiger is the liaison for the Policy and Legislative Committee and has been, and he will be at the table, as are the other liaisons to our committees. I also want to note for the record that Ms. Totten had requested that these policies come back to committee for review. She was kind enough to provide written comment. She wanted the comments to be written so that they would be addressed at committee meeting, so that it would be done in a public forum, and a number of the recommendations that she made with respect to those written comments were actually incorporated into the policies, and I appreciate that. I have indicated that any citizen member who would have a written comment that they would like addressed, if they are unable to be at the meeting, would be welcome to do that because then it allows for the ability of the committee to address it at the committee level, and if it's not done in the manner that is acceptable, they will have first reading at the committee and the board, second reading at the committee and the board, so there will be ample opportunity to pull those policies together. So, the two items that we, because we had such extensive and good discussion, and because we incorporated, our recommendation was to incorporate Policies 171.2, which is Agenda Preparation, Dissemination, and Policy 171.2 exhibit, to combine it into Policy 171. That's why the packet tonight is a little bit wieldy in terms of that policy. It is on for first reading, so again, I just want to clarify to the board that whatever recommendation suggestions will be taken back to the next committee meeting.
Thank you. Okay, so we are on second reading of policies.
Yes.
First read, sorry, so we're on 142?
142.
All right, are these action, do we need to accept these for first and second readings, or are we just...
These are, in the first case, these are second reading of policies that for first reading were referred back to the committee by the board. So these two policies, 142 and the proposed 363.2, are for second reading here at the board level.
Okay, I understand.
Okay.
All right, so that means these two are ready if...
Correct.
...we don't have additions or changes. Lisa?
Again, on this summary where it, yes, I did send my suggestions, but the way it is written, the way I'm reading it, it implies that all my suggestions were incorporated and that the changes that were made were my suggestions, so I'm not sure you need to put a name in there other than to say, well, obviously, there were suggestions given. But again, I want it made very clear that not all my suggestions were accepted, and all the changes that were made were mine, you know?
Right.
Which is the way it should be. So I would prefer from now on, if you would not include that in there...
To just not include your name?
Well, right, just that there were, there were community suggestions or whatever.
That's fine.
You know, so, okay. Then, on the policy itself, the sentence that says, "The legal advice shall be obtained as needed," the definition of "shall" says you must do it. The problem with, when I read this, is the needed portion of it in that what's needed for you may not be needed for someone else, and someone might say, "Okay, why didn't you contact the attorney?" And they're going to say, "Well, we didn't need to." Well, I believe you did need to. So I would really like to give us a "may" instead of a "shall," just to make it, so it's our option whether we get legal advice. So it's not where we can't get called out on that later. The board president and/or superintendent... The, the board president and/or superintendent, like Reed, I just said, the whole, the whole reason for RFP, well, I shouldn't say the whole reason, but one of the major reasons for the RFP with the legal were the costs associated with how much we're spending on legal. So I'm not sure if, if that's, if that's the appropriate way to do it, or if we should be saying that the board should be deciding. And then the other thing is, I know we've had board members contact the, our legal advisor in the past. Also, when you contact Gab or whoever, they will tell you to contact your legal advisor. So to say in there that these are the only two that can contact legal, I think that's really limiting the board member's hands. And I think if a board member feels they need to contact the attorney, it should be a board decision, not whether, I mean, this is part of the deal with the agenda setting. Why we changed the wording of things because things were not being put on the agenda. The board president was making that call, and it wasn't happening. So I really think we need to reword that sentence.
Can I just add a comment in there? I think, I think every president and vice president are going to have to work out their relationship and how they handle it.
Right.
And, you know, this is totally for your information. Jeff and I have agreed that if it's a consequential situation, it will always be a three-way call because we hear very differently. If it's inconsequential, it's fine with him that I just make the call. So that's kind of what we've agreed on. And I think each president and vice president are going to have to work that out together.
And that makes perfect sense to me. It's just that this sentence doesn't allow for it. Because if we make policy and we want to stick by our policy, this isn't, this doesn't support that way of doing things. And I mean, you know, so I'm just saying, I think that sentence needs to be revisited.
Yes.
At policy, we did have that discussion. I believe that shall is the correct word. I believe as needed is the question. And I believe in daily operations, and Angel, I'm sure you know this, as I did when I was vice president for a number of years, that during the day, operating a district, there are times where you have to make a call, and you need to know what legal is on that. And I believe that if we're going to elect a board president, if there's a question sometime, we can always question the board president, but you have to have leadership. I understand that the board governs together, but I think there have been a number of times that the superintendent and the board president need to call. And as we discussed at the policy meeting, you know, every single time you have a different president, vice president, superintendent, things are going to run differently. They're going to have, they're going to work together in a different way. But I think this is a broad policy, and I think you at least need to have those two people be able to contact the, the legal for advice. And I think there are a number of times when board members actually have done things that have forced the president and the administration to contact legal to make sure that they were being protected. So I don't have a problem with this at all. I think it reads exactly as it should.
That being said, Chris, that you'd like this wording, would you be opposed to adding to it that other, additional board members may contact the attorney if they need it or if they are advised to? Or, you know, I mean, I, I just don't, I don't feel comfortable limiting it to them. I mean, I know you, you know, as a board member, felt the need to contact the attorney once, and I, I don't think it's appropriate to say that if you're in that position again, you can't do that.
Right. No, but the first thing is that that's the first time in my entire 13 years when I was concerned about something illegal being done. And I went to the board president and said, I would like to have that conversation with you and legal. She was unable to do it at the time. And I said, is there a problem? And would you speak to, I believe the lawyer spoke to you after I did to make sure that you understood. I, I don't think board members, they never have, should be calling legal. I, I just do not think. I did it once because legally, going through the board president, I felt that I was really concerned that there was something illegal that was going to happen. So I don't believe that board members should be doing that. I don't think that's their role to do it. I think we have a board lawyer. We have, you can contact the board president. That's why we elect a board president, so.
Okay. We have recommendations for motions. I don't know if people want to make them with, how you want to do it, but let's get some recommendations rolling. Just a first or second on this one?
So this is a second reading.
I have some other things I wanted to say.
Okay.
The last statement where it says, it was added, "The superintendent and/or his designee shall direct and monitor communication with auditor." Part of the role of an auditor is being able to communicate with whatever staff member they feel necessary to do their, whatever they were engaged to do in their engagement letter. I don't think it's fair to say that they have to go through the superintendent. That removes the, what do I, what word do I want to use? It, it removes the ability to do an accurate audit when you, when you have those types of constraints. And also in the sentence above, it says, "The auditor shall carry out required audit practices and verifications as needed." It actually should say per whatever's in the RFP request or the engagement letter because if they're in the middle of doing something and they see that maybe something in addition should be audited, if it's outside the scope of their engagement letter, I don't believe that that's the case.
These are things I need to hear from the board on. If these are changes that are going to be made, then we need to talk about it or send it back to committee. Or if we're fine with the way it is, then we need to move on it.
Make a comment about the superintendent or his designee. That's a phrase that used, is used in hundreds of the policies. It's not restrictive at all. It simply says that if the superintendent isn't the one to do it, in this case, Tom Owens, or whoever the business manager is. So it's not restrictive. That's a phrase that's used in hundreds of our policies exactly for that reason, so that it's not restrictive.
And, and I would agree with the other policies where it says that. But when it comes to an audit and if we are going to really be sticking by our policies, I find it to be restrictive.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve Policy 142 as presented.
Second.
Any further comments or questions?
So we're not changing anything for anything that I commented on?
Not per the motion.
Okay.
I guess I'd like to hear from Meg. I mean, she's in charge of this committee, of the thoughts of the changes that, that she or anyone else requested.
I guess, I guess I'd, again, I'll go back to my, my general thought with respect to policies is that they should be as broad as possible to allow for interpretation. And that language, that the absence of a qualifying word doesn't necessarily mean in practice. And I guess I'll, the example that I gave at the meeting is that each year, the school board elects a president and a vice president. I'm going to be jumping ahead to the other policy we'll be reviewing later, but it's just as illustration. That policy indicates currently the president, vice president, and superintendent will prepare the agenda. That's basically what it reads. Now, Angel as a president and Jeff as vice president could say, you know what, we want to sit down over a cup of coffee with the superintendent and work through what he's got on his work list, and work through what the board members have brought forward, and come up with our agenda. That language allows them to do that. Another president could say, you know what, I work full-time. I don't have the time to sit down. What I want is I want the superintendent to forward in writing what he wants the agenda items to be, and I want the vice president to forward in writing what he or she wants the agenda items to be. And then I'm going to put together an agenda, and I'm going to ship it around and ask for comment. Okay? That language does not prevent that from happening as well. So you create the language, and then, then the individuals within those areas, they, they work within the words and within their own abilities, schedules, et cetera, to get the work done. And I don't think as a board that we should be limiting that ability. So, so sometimes fewer words are broader and allow the individuals within, within those positions to be able to effectively do it based on what their, what their schedules, what their abilities, et cetera, are. So, so moving forward with respect to this policy, there were two purposes, I think, that came forward. One of them was prompted by a written comment that indicated the need to restrict this information to district matters. So to ensure that what we were doing is saying that the contact would be done with respect to district matters. And so that language went in, and went in as needed. And again, anytime you do that, that's, you're, you're anticipating that those people, given the authority to do so, are also given the authority to make that determination. So, so the second purpose was to ensure that there were limited, there were limited personnel that were making actual direct contact. In part because we have an existing policy that basically says, we as individual board members, we have no ability as individuals to do anything on behalf of this board. We can only act as a board. So I don't have the ability to call the attorney. Now, if I come forward to the board and I ask for a board vote to allow me as an individual to do that, then I can within our existing policies. And I think that the purpose here was to reflect the reality that within this district, for the last many years, the superintendent and the president have been the, the offices that have contacted the attorney on behalf of the district. So that's why we've got board president and/or superintendent. Because, because again, it's not Angel or Attila who are, have the authority. It's their office that has that authority. And that's given to them as a result of the fact that we've elected both of them in different ways to their position. So that was the purpose for both of them, both, both for the, both for the auditor. And that was, the, the purpose that was explained was the superintendent's ability to ensure that, that he's the primary, he or she or, you know, is the primary contact with the auditor. Other members within the district have, have the ability as needed within the scope of the audit. But, but individual employees of the district can't on their own be calling up the auditor and saying, hey, I want to talk to you about this, 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 and this. It's ultimately starts with the superintendent and the, and that work of the audit or experience with the auditor is directed through that office. It doesn't limit all the ability of the auditor within the scope of their work to reach out to whoever they need to reach out to and to get whatever they need. But it, it, it again reflects the reality for the, the last many, many years, it's the superintendent that has worked forward with the auditor. So, so that's, that was the rationale for the wording.
Okay. We have a motion in a second? Yes?
Yeah, I just, I mean, I, and I wish I could make it to your meetings. That's why I've pushed for a day where most of the board can make it because I think it's very important. Even if I have to sit in the audience, I can understand that and that I don't have to ask questions about it. And I wish we could relook at that and move that date into, you know, a date where most of us can, or all of us can make it, which some people don't care to make it. I do. So, and, and out of the four years, I've been to almost every committee meeting when we had it. So I believe the shall word does restrict us. It should say may. It gives us kind of the opportunity that we don't have to do it. Shall, to me, we have to do it. May means, okay, it's up to the board. Again, that's just my interpretation of it. And if, you know, someone's reading this, totally interpret it, you know? And to me, that last sentence too, is, it's restricting us. I understand, you know, that it should flow through the superintendent. But again, if the auditor needs to speak to another administrator or person, do they have to have permission? You know, again, I understand your thought process, but some of these sentences feel very restricted to me, so.
Ms. Faxon, can I add a comment?
Sure.
Just as a matter of grammar, the word shall in that sentence does not refer to the district or the superintendent or anybody in it. That shall refers to the attorney. The as needed is the clause that says as needed. The shall doesn't mean that it directs the district or anybody in the district. The other comment is that the superintendent or his designee. I've contacted the auditor once in the four-plus years that I've been here, and it had nothing to do with the audit. It had to do with verifying a contact that was made by a board member to the auditor. It's the only time I've contacted the auditor. The reason is, is that that job is performed by the business office, and I have no reason to talk to the auditor. So the superintendent or his designee is, actually does what it's supposed to do. The designee for that is Tom by virtue of his position description.
Yep. So when it says, "Legal advice shall be obtained as needed by," with that word by, how are you
You have to read the entire sentence. You can't take it out of context.
Legal advice.
It says, "The board-appointed attorney shall act as legal counsel for the board and the superintendent."
You're reading the wrong sentence.
I apologize.
So. So, so I guess I'll explain it to you this way. We as a district want to make sure if we need legal advice, that it happens. Okay? So there is a responsibility to the office of superintendent and president, as much as there's a privilege. Their privilege is they get to call the attorney. Their responsibility is, if this district needs legal advice, they better be on the phone calling the attorney. So I guess I would say there is a duty on their part, and, and there is a discretion in that. And they have the ability, again, as, as was noted again in some comments the other day, that legal advice can, if they determine legal advice is needed, they can call the GIB, they can call the Wisconsin School Board, they can call, I mean, they don't have to call the attorney to get the legal advice. But, but, but if there's a matter within this district, I believe it, there is a positive, there's a positive obligation to do that. So to me, it's, to me, it's a, it's a, yeah, we should, we, it needs to be shall because we don't want them coming to us and saying, meh, well, you said we didn't have to, so we're off the hook. So I guess that's, that's what I would say. From a district perspective, the language protects the district.
Angel, I would like to call the question, please.
Okay.
So.
The motion in a second.
To approve Policy 142 as presented.
Right. To call the question, it needs two-thirds vote.
Go ahead, Phil, call, please.
I need a second.
Second.
Oh, sorry.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
I have just a second.
So all we're voting on right now is the call to question?
Question.
Which means
We're done talking.
No more talking.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ebo?
Yes.
Ms. Erler?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Kocanowski?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sherick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Okay. So then we have a motion in a second to approve 142 as submitted by the committee.
Mr. Ebo?
Yes.
Ms. Erler?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Kocanowski?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sherick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
No.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to one.
Okay. Then we are on to number Okay, then we are on to number, so A, two little i's, student use of personal electronic device. This is also being referred back as a second reading. Any questions or comments on that? Yep, Lisa?
What happened to the Policy 447.6 that was created when the whole issue with the teacher taping up at SPS happened in the HR Committee at the same time we reviewed, I believe it was the 447.5 policy? It's not on our website, but the policy was created and it's like all of a sudden gone.
What's the number?
447.6.
Oh, it's not on the website.
No, it is not, but it did exist. It's in, I have it in my old packets.
I'd have to go back and research it very well. Could have been, Brian, could that have been one of the ones that was collapsed into 381.3?
I think, I think it was.
I don't either, I've not...
Do you know what the name of it was?
Well, we had the staff use of non-district, and then there was the student use one. They were essentially the same, except one was from staff perspective and one was student perspective. And it came about because of some issues with electronics up at the high school. I don't really want to get into the specifics of it, but, so then it was brought to the HR Committee when they were working on the handbook. It was approved, I thought, at that point, and, you know, in fact, it was even referenced in the 447.5. On the bottom, it was referenced, the 447.6.
I don't think, I was one of the big proponents of that, and I don't think it ever passed.
Okay, so it went through, talked about it, and we never passed it.
Correct.
Is it in the handbook?
If it didn't pass, it didn't go anywhere.
But did we put it in the handbook and not in the policy?
I don't know that, I don't know that.
Something like that, that's just, I remember something that they said we wouldn't need it in policy because we were putting it in handbook, but I could be wrong, so I'll have to, someone will have to do a little research.
I just think it'd be nice to see that policy to make sure everything was incorporated.
Maybe it's in the student handbook, I think that's what it was. I think it was, wasn't it?
But there was two policies.
Yeah, there were.
Something was in the stu, we put something in the stu.
There was a lot of talk in it because of some issues that we had.
This policy, the cover memo indicates the statement, Brian's here to respond to it, it was, this is a new policy that actually puts us in line with the Wisconsin statutes and is recommended by DTI. So I don't, I don't know that its relationship to the proposed policy that you were talking about, Lisa, but I'll find out, I'll find out what that policy is.
If you could, if you can forward me that, just, you know, I'm in support of this, but I would like to see.
I'll bring it to the Policy and Legislation Committee.
Yes, fine.
Attila, I think, I think we took the language in there, there was the discussion that that should be in the student.
Right, I'll research that.
In order to do that, though, you need this policy. In essence, you reversed it, you did the language in the handbook, but what the statutes say is that you need to have a policy that determines that you want to do that and then be able to allow the handbooks to do that.
Yes. Can I just make a motion, I don't know if anybody else had any changes, to accept the second reading of the new policy, 363.2.
Second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Earler?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay, so these are coming...
They're done, the two that we just done are done.
Nope, sorry, I'm on B now. What are we doing with these?
These are here for first reading, right.
For a first reading? Okay, so these are a first reading and we'll go back to committee?
Right.
Either way, but they just need to be passed as a first reading. So I would suggest if you have changes or alterations, you still have the opportunity to present them to the committee, rather than spending our time talking about them now, if anybody wants to submit them.
Can I address the revisions that are at your places, so everybody knows what they are?
Yes, please do.
Okay. So first of all, I apologize for the necessity for the revisions. After the packets went out, Meg identified that in my redline version and in the clean copy version, I had repeated something and I had left something in that the committee had decided to take out, so I apologize for that. So let me just, you have, you should have two documents in front of you that have the word revised five times at the top on each one, so that you know it's a revision. One is in blue and one is the clean copy in black.
Can you tell me what it was that you put in twice?
I'm going to, I want to make sure everybody has their copy in front of them. Amy has extras if you don't, but I think you put them at everybody's places, there you go. So there's a blue one and a black one, the blue one is redlined, the black one's not. So what happened was that at the committee, the committee decided to change, the first thing that happened was that the committee agreed with the recommendation to collapse 171, 172.2, and 171.2 into one policy, because there was duplication and it would be too difficult to look at three policies to figure out if they were consistent. So we collapsed all three of them into one, and I took sections and put them in there. When doing that, under letter A, regular monthly board meetings, number two agendas, I inadvertently left in the statement that the agenda shall be determined by the president, vice president, superintendent, and recommendations by the superintendent, because that committee, that language was changed. So what you have in front of you is what the committee recommended, and it was that the agenda shall be prepared by the president, vice president, superintendent, and then under 2A, 3I, if an item is approved for a future agenda, the president, vice president, superintendent have 60 days to schedule. So in the version that I sent to you, it said, and with recommendations by the superintendent, which was a change that the committee made. So that's, that's the change, and I apologize for, for that. But what you have there in front of you, the two pages of revision are simply replacing the first two pages that you have, and then there's the clean copy there.
Well, and just one other point of clarification, in the blue line, you're able to see that A1, the, there's a, there's a paragraph that was totally crossed out, because it repeated the issue about rescheduling, I mean, scheduling of future agenda items within 60 days. And because we were melding the policies, it wound up getting into the draft in two different locations. So if you look at the blue line, what the superintendent did was he took it out of the paragraph that begins with regular monthly board meetings, and he kept it in the paragraph that has to do with the agendas, because it's more, it's appropriate to be in that part, because it's within the setting of agendas. So again, it just eliminated that duplication.
Everything else is the same as the board had in its packet, with the exception of A2, A2A, and then some of those items. So I apologize.
So this is the policy that had come to the board last month, the board referred it back to committee, and so committee made revisions, but we also, we, rather than trying to work with three different policies and try to keep, you know, make them so they all said the same thing and were consistent, we thought it would be more understandable if they were all collapsed into one policy. So all of the information was in one location, and it was all consistent. And so for that reason, we brought it to the board as first reading, because the exhibit and the, one of the other policies was, came to us for first reading, because we hadn't looked at it yet. So this is our first look, I mean, again, our first look at this, and it'll be coming back to the committee with your, after your comments, it'll be coming back then to you at the next regular board meeting.
Yep. I have the same comment on the summary, that it implies that they were my suggestions that were done and stuff, so I want that taken off. I'm curious, the month before, when, when the policies were brought to us, there was also 141, 181, 180, and 185.
We didn't get to those. We spent, I mean, this, this was quite a bit of discussion, both with respect to this and both with respect to board policies. And we had comment, I mean, we had public comments, we had board comments, and so we had a full discussion, and so we ran, frankly, ran out of time.
Okay, so those are lost?
Those are all, no, they're, they're coming, they're, they're on our agenda.
Okay, thank you. Under A1, the regular board meetings, it was added unless the board votes to cancel a regular monthly meeting, and then there's a state statute referenced. I looked up that statute, and it doesn't allow us to meet less than once a month. The statute, that subsection says we have to meet minimum once a month, so...
Actually, Lisa, I checked with legal counsel about that.
Yeah.
And legal counsel says that the board can act to not meet every month. The board has that.
Even though the statute says we're supposed to.
Correct, right.
So then...
The board has done that in the past.
Well, I know, and I don't think it was appropriate.
Right, I've checked with legal counsel about that.
But if we're putting that statute there, that that's what we're following, and, you know, again, the statute, I don't know how legal counsel can say it's okay, but whatever, I'm not an attorney, but when it says, actually, I think I printed it, that we have to meet at minimum once a month, I, like I said, it doesn't, why are we referencing that statute when we're not following it? You know, 120.43, school board meetings, subsection two, the school board shall meet at least once each month, and at other times upon the call of the school board district president or upon the filing of a request with the school board district clerk signed by a majority of the school board members, so...
I can get further clarification for you.
Yeah.
Be glad to do that.
We'll, we'll make sure they can strike down and discuss it at the committee meeting.
Yeah, because that's, that's, okay, and, and as, as much as I was okay with sending in my comments before, unfortunately, I don't want to admit to it, but, well, yes, I do, Reed is right, I was a community member and I wasn't there, but if my comments got more time than his did, or being the only community member...
We actually took some of Reed's recommendations.
Okay, so you allowed him to participate with no limitations?
He had sug, he, no, he had his...
Yeah, I had limitations when I couldn't talk.
You have some now.
But I'm, I'm, you know what I'm saying, I don't feel comfortable as a community member having, you know, not being on the committee, having special treatment. So that being said, I'd like to go through mine, my comments, and, pardon me?
Were fully reviewed with respect to this policy.
Oh, I have no doubt that, I'm not saying that they weren't.
So if there are, but typically, if there are certain things that you are concerned with, point them out, so that the committee can then take a look at them next month.
Well, and that's part of the problem with it not being taped, because if, if I could watch the tape, because like Kim, they're not on a night that I can always make it, you know, I would love for those to be rescheduled so I could be there, and then I could see the discussion that the committee had, so then I wouldn't bring up the same thing or ask it a different way or whatever. I mean, it would be very, very helpful if they were taped, so, you know, again, I could, I could see, so...
Well, I'm going to ask then, if we're at 9:45, we have a big item left, I want to know how the board feels, do we want this to be submitted back to the committee, or do we want Lisa to get a chance to read what she wants to read? This is... Do you have? Stabs?
No, that was...
Just that, and then that's it, just that one, just those. There are not that many. Okay, go ahead and read them then.
Okay. We, I'm not really sure I understand why the wording was taken out for setting the agendas. We as a board worked very diligently and very long to come up with wording that we found that we could all live with, and now it's been changed so that it, the superintendent would submit recommendations for consideration to the president and vice president has been removed. I'm not sure I understand the reasoning behind that, and again, I didn't see, there was no tape, so if you could just tell me why?
Well, the rationale behind it is that, again, this is broad language. The agenda for board meetings shall be prepared by the president, vice president, and superintendent. Those three were also the offices that were providing that under the old policy. This does not, this does not dictate how it's done, this does not dictate when it's done. This allows the president, vice president, and superintendent to work together in the manner that they determine to create the agenda.
And I must have asked the question wrong, because what I'm really asking is...
What are we changing?
Yeah, why would it take?
Well, one of the things that I... It was changed to allow, to allow for the, again, to allow for, to allow for the broadest ability for that group to work together. Also, there was information provided at the committee meeting that 80 to 90% of what comes up through the agenda, comes up through the school district, which it should, I mean, that's, so the vast majority of what comes up is coming up through the superintendent's office, through all of the school district. And therefore, those three offices practically are working together to craft an agenda that has items on it that are needed to be addressed and are also timely to be addressed, so that if there's a contract that comes up annually, they are working to make sure it comes up at the correct time. If there's a report that needs to get out, they're responsible for making sure that it's coming in at a time when it needs to come in for the school board to...
So then the wording...
So that's what it is.
Okay, so the wording...
So the wording doesn't, the wording just allows that group of officers to, as I said, to work in the way that they want to work. So Angel, I have no doubt that Angel and Jeff and the superintendent are working together to create an agenda in a different way than the previous president and the superintendent and vice president, and the previous one. And this language allows that to happen.
And again, I, obviously not saying it correctly, so the way it was worded before, how did that prevent that from happening? Because that is what's been happening, that the, they've been working together, most of them, agenda comes from underneath, so...
My sense was, it was, recommendations suggest that there's a few little pieces of information passed along, but...
That's reality.
My, my sense was that the substantive amount of work that's coming up is coming up through the superintendent's office. It's not being recommended by, it's coming up through, and then those three offices are working together to craft the agenda.
Correct.
And that's, that's what this language reflects.
Okay.
One of the other things, Lisa, that I brought up at the meeting, because it just, it's never been, I've set agendas with the president and the vice president. Initially, it was just, I think when Dwight was president, it was just the president and the superintendent. When Renee got on, and I don't know if you were working at policy, but we thought there should be another officer involved, and we added the vice president to that. But the reality is, no two people, president and board president, have ever set a board agenda. And so I started to think about, well, what do other districts do? And I started out with seven districts, then 27 districts, and almost 95% of them, and we can go through them all, superintendent, sometimes without the president or vice president, sets the agenda. It isn't about a power thing, it's about, this is the person who's running the operations of the district. And some show the superintendent or the board president, some, I mean, I can tell you, Green Bay, Nina, Oshkosh, Rhinelander, Beloit, Appleton, and that's just a few of them.
Well, yeah, we have over 400... Well, yeah, we have over 400 districts in the states.
Right, right, no, I know, well, yeah, but I went through about 20 more, and the thing is, I did this agenda with presidents and superintendents. Superintendents set the agenda along with officers, the board president, sometimes, sometimes the board president, sometimes that. So the actual facts and reality of what's being done does not say that the board president and vice president set the agenda, and then they ask for recommendations from the superintendent. That's just not the reality. And this, putting it that way, says, you know what, you work it together. The board president actually has final say. So it isn't, it's just the reality and the facts of what actually happens, setting the agenda.
And I disagree. I think it should be clear that the president, you know, does get the final say, but that is not when it's, when it's stated like this, and maybe that's why, you know, those other policies need to be done pretty much at the same time, because we have the duties of the officers and all of that is intertwined with this. So it makes it very difficult to not have them all together. So I respectfully disagree with you. I think it's important that the board remembers that we are legally responsible for this district, and while we hire our superintendent to manage the district on our behalf, the superintendent is not at the same level as...
So are you saying that the superintendent has more power over the board president and vice president if he's not recommending, but being part of the group, that, because that's what it sounds like, like there's a power struggle here?
Okay, can we move on to what your other suggestions are? I think it's getting argumentative.
Oh, I'm asking clarification.
So, and this, in the 2A2, the last part of the sentence says, "Unless brought back to the board for further discussion, review, and/or discussion, extension." I didn't, I didn't understand why that was in there. If we have a policy that it has to be on the agenda within 60 days, even if it has to come back for further extension, it's being put on the policy, it's being put on the agenda. So it already is, so it's, I didn't understand how that was any different than putting it on. It's just saying that it would be discussion, review, or extension, but it would still be put on the agenda. So I didn't understand why the need for that.
This was the language that was brought, that was there before I was involved with this. I mean, after tonight, there's part of me thinking, we may not even need this. If we, if we, as a board, are willing to work together and work through the vice president and president to properly and timely schedule agenda items, maybe we don't need any of this.
Well, and, and...
So, and, I mean, so that's, I mean, that's something, if the board wants us to, to take a look at that when it's brought back, because, as I said, sometimes, the more specific you get, I mean, the more rules you put in, the more you tie everybody's hands. So tonight, frankly, we were in violation of policy, because those agenda items were on the agenda, and they were, they were, they were not... So, so maybe that's, maybe that's the answer, Lisa. Rather than just the one sentence, maybe we bring it back and take a look at, you know, have a discussion about...
And part of the problem is, we have policies that contradict one another, and that's where, again, I think it's important that we bring those other policies, they really needed to be done at the same time with this one, and I'm not sure if maybe this just needs to go back to committee and be brought once, because once you address those other policies, there may be changes that you want to make in here, instead of, but that's...
This one is going back to committee, this is just the first reading for us. Do you have any other comments?
So 2A3, it says, "Typically, information and action shall be provided by the superintendent." Why are we stating that if that was what is being implied by 2A1? I mean, if, if it's...
Maybe we don't need it, you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, why are we adding that in there?
Well, I just want to make a comment about those, those items. If you look down at the bottom of the revised page 2, you'll see a bunch of paragraphs that were deleted. That language was just moved so that it appeared in a list, rather than in paragraphs.
The problem is, I didn't make my notes on this. I made my notes on the information that I got in the packet, so I don't have the cross off on the sheet that I'm looking at.
The original, what was sent out to the board, also had that same, so I'll point you in that direction.
But, but I'm saying, I made my, my changes are on the red. Oh, I see what you're saying, they're on the side, okay.
Follow?
Yeah, no, I see what you're talking about.
Thank you.
Okay, so I still don't think that's needed.
That was four, Lisa, typically information?
Three.
1B?
2A3, it says, "Typically, information or recommendations..."
Oh, you, on mine, it's, yeah, sorry, on mine, it's four.
It's four on the, on the new one, you're fine, you're fine.
One of the things that happened with the revision, it went from 10 to 9.
Okay, all right, but that's the one, it doesn't matter, that's the one.
You're saying possibly deleting that.
Yeah, there's no reason for it.
And you said on, just to go back, on 3, possibly deleting part of that?
The whole thing.
The whole thing, okay. I just want to see if I can follow along, so...
And then, and then...
So, can I, I'm sorry, can I ask for clarification? Because I got lost in the conversation. You're recommending or asking that triple I get deleted entirely?
Correct.
Thank you.
So then, 4, underneath it, it doesn't make any sense. Agenda items requested by board members should have information provided by those board members?
Let's, 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 we'll take this back, Lisa, and based on the conversation we've had tonight, as to that, why don't we just take a relook at it?
Okay, and then bring it back for a first read?
We can bring it back for a first reading.
With the other ones, hopefully, if you have time.
Okay, you'll bring it back as a first, not a second.
That's fine, we can, we can do that, and then, based on the conversation we had tonight, I think, I think we have, I think, I think I've got a sense of, of how we can move forward again to simplify the policy, but, but make sure that we have all the nuts and bolts in it we need.
And again, I think it might be prudent to, you know, do it with the, some of these other policies.
Lisa, can I just ask, which were the other ones you were talking about? 140, because I know you had them down.
Yeah.
141, what else?
180.
Mm-hmm.
And I would, while they're doing that, I would really love to see how we can get these taped, and I'm going to try to remember to ask that to be on the agenda, because I would really like to go through and see what the thought process is, what was behind, you know, where we got. It's just easier for me to follow along than to take this home and read this.
Well, and I have put in a request that that be addressed, because we did discuss it at SASH, when we decided to go back to the committees, that they were going to be taped, and it was never, I don't know why it wasn't implemented, but it wasn't, but that was the intent, so that they were taped, particularly because it wasn't on a night where all the board members could make it. So I did put it in.
Did you put that, okay, thank you.
Yes, I did.
Yep, it's on there, I've got her form filled out, and actually have a solution, hopefully mine, but I can't address it tonight because it's not on the agenda.
Good, thank you.
Well, you could, right here.
Okay, well, I'll address it. From this point on, at all committee meetings, I will take my little iPad and pop record, and record it, and Dan is going to help me put it on YouTube and the district website, if we can format it that way, but it'll be on YouTube the next day.
Would you like to ask all of the board members if they support that?
Yeah, why wouldn't we? We already did.
Well, no, it's recording it, it already, it's always audio recorded. We always have a good audio recording, it's, this is a visual recording.
I'd also like to include, if you didn't say that I didn't catch it, workshops as well.
No, oh, sorry, we're not there, I was just throwing it in, because Kim said I could, but yes.
And it would be very helpful for me to...
Just easier to watch.
Clearly, I spend a lot of time on...
Sure. This is all due to the fact that our technology department is so ridiculously overworked, that we're just trying to pare it down, I'm trying to make this easier on them. This is a simple solution, the community was kind enough to buy us iPads. I can hit the record button, I'm a big girl, yes.
So they will be recorded from now on.
So you're going to be taking pictures of the community members also that are on the committee?
We could post that, or email it.
I'll be happy to get their permission.
That's why I'm asking, because the reason that we never did that was to allow for community members to feel comfortable and not feel like they're being videoed on camera, on YouTube, or anything else. That's a real concern.
Will it just be an audio recording, then?
That's what it already is.
But, I mean...
The audio, the audio's there.
I mean, can I access the meeting, can the, can the district, for instance, access the meeting that we had, the workshop with Dale Feinauer?
Currently?
Yes.
No. But we have, we have a policy that all our meetings are taped, so...
They're all taped, but they're not posted, any.
Okay, we're way off topic, I'm going to reel us back in, okay. There we go. Is that it for policies?
A motion to send it back for first reading?
For first reading.
Okay, yes.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Yes, 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 just consent, yes.
Am I the only one that goes through these things?
Yes.
No.
No.
Yes to her.
Lisa, I really didn't want to say it in this manner, but you should join the policy committee.
Well, and I would be up to be on it if you would change the night.
Consensus to take these all back for first reading?
Yes.
Yes.
Yay, okay. Reed, you're up.
Change the night, and I'll gladly join.
Where are we?
What?
How does...
Where did he get out?
We're on G.
Okay, it's, uh...
We're on G2, right?
Oh, G2.
Superintendent slash Office of Superdecision Action. Well, you just brought it up, Alex, that it wasn't taped, it never got a, this idea never got a fair shake, okay? This Dale Feinair guy that you're paying 500 bucks for, that you thought was walked on water, was the guy that brought it up, okay? Now, I found you a school district that's really huge in Colorado that operates like that, okay? So it, he even said that the press would get a hold of it and screw it up, which they did. They had people thinking like, oh, how can you operate without a superintendent? But that wasn't true, but that never got, you know, put out there. And it's the Office of Superintendent where you'd have your, your district people run, you know, collaborate. And let's step back a little bit, before, a lot of your people's time, not that distant future, where they had a, you know, well, you know, the, we wouldn't be, the reason we're here is that the superintendent quick resigned when he thought maybe he'd get fired, and then...
Hey, Reed, you're crossing lines.
I've given you some history on why, why we're here. If everything were so great, we wouldn't be here, even talking about whether we're going to have a superintendent. So I'm looking at people that are new, that's why we're here. It wasn't rosy, things weren't working good. We had a superintendent that was running the show. He wants to be equal, if not greater, than the board, that was the problem here.
Reed, stop, you're out of order.
And I'm saying that that was why an Office of Superintendent, where you'd get four people, and you, president, made a comment in the paper that says, geez, we, our, our people weren't hired for that. You were already putting the idea down in the press. But that was a fair idea, saying that those people we hired, you know, weren't hired for to run, run our school district as an Office of Superintendent. Look, if they, you hire those people, if they aren't going to do what you want them to do, you hire new people. That's how that one works. And by the way, I see Mr. Neon, I don't know if he's gone yet, why don't you ask him? I believe he's had a superintendent license, if he, along with three other people, administrators here, could run this school district. And if he can't, then I wouldn't even consider him to, as an in-house superintendent search what a lot of you people want to do. I think he could, and I think he could, with four other people, could run the school district. And the idea was, because then it's fair, you got, you bounce it off of people. Right now, I'll guarantee you, right now, these people, I don't know what they're, they're afraid for their jobs. There's a lot of people afraid for their jobs. A lot of teachers, there's one right back there. Through the grapevine here, she's taking you to court, I hope she beats you big time, because the superintendent, you knew people...
They on topic?
Didn't, didn't handle it. I am on topic.
Why not?
That's why we need a, we need the Office of Superintendent, something new in this school district. We got major problems here, we don't spend any time talking about education of students here. It's all this kind of stuff, policy, policy, policy. Because we've got a controlling individual as a superintendent, and he, this individual, when you guys probably got the votes here, are going to go to a superintendent, you not even give this one a chance, because you got it all screwed up already. And, and he'll be here helping pick the next superintendent, so what do you think you're going to get? And then if nobody runs, they'll probably have that, Christine Scott, and them, who's, who, one of, so broke a rule, she's in the, you're all supposed to, she's writing special articles in the paper, still wants to go to superintendent, not following what the board decided. So what I'm getting at here is, you got to try something new. We're, we're in, this is unique, and there's an opportunity, Alec brought up, to do something different. And it hasn't got a fair shake, and you don't have to make a decision, give it a fair shake. And I hope you talk it up, Alex, tonight is your time to tell us what it really is, and what it can be done, because that's the only hope that I see for this school district, and you got people right now. I think Mr. Neon's a good guy, but he's being controlled by the superintendent. And I think with Owens and these other guys, they could run the show, and they could tell us exactly what the truth is, without fearing for their jobs. Boy, I'm hearing it from people, I mean, you don't hear from people, then, then, boy, they must be afraid of you. They're telling me people are afraid, not these, but teachers, a lot of people, staff, who are no confidence in this guy. Do something different.
Are there other public speakers?
There are not.
Okay, if you don't mind, since I kind of had the connection originally with Amroll and kept this rolling a bit in the beginning, I would just like to be able to open this discussion a little bit, and then, before a motion is made, I'd like a chance to, to say a final word before a motion is made. Today, I'm uncertain that my words will reach the other board members, and I have, that it will get the proper consideration, because as I look around, it looks like most of us are tired, I'm tired. Reed has got my heart pumping a little bit, so maybe it'll come out better, but it's not going to get the consideration it should tonight, even. One other thing, before I let the rest of the board debate this, we're not nine tonight, we're eight. I already thought and figured it's going to be left up to two votes for this to pass. That's just the way I saw it. One of the people that I figured, after hearing what has to be said tonight, probably, maybe, hopefully, would have voted in favor of this, but that's not going to happen. So the best we can hope for tonight, unless miraculously everyone agrees, or the majority agrees, is 4-4. That's the best, and what happens with 4-4, it fails, it's gone. Is this the final straw? Is this it? Or do we give this a fair shake, like Reed was saying? Now, that's all I have to say, if I can answer a question, I'll interject if you want me to, otherwise I'll save my comments till the end.
Okay, I'll direct this. We had a workshop, what you were sent in your packet was the exact list Dale gave to me, it was just pasted and copied by Amy, I think...
I didn't even paste and copy it.
She just added it on there. So I think people were disappointed that it wasn't more thorough, but it is what Dale sent me. We talked about this at length at the last board meeting, or, sorry, at the special workshop, and we just need to, what we agreed is that we're either going to start moving forward, kind of with one or the other, we either, we're going to get, continue to give this a chance and explore it a little bit, or it needs to go away, and we'll pursue hiring a superintendent. I will refrain. Comments? Yep, Lisa?
And I know Dale probably wouldn't approve of this, but I would like to hear Greg, what he thinks of it, and if he thinks he could do a good job with our set. Is Greg here?
Without due respect, I don't think it's fair to ask cabinet members their opinion in public about a matter that would affect their employment, because they run the risk of saying something that if you choose to go to the Office of a Superintendent, they, they run the risk of being affected by it. And it's not fair to ambush them like this tonight. Have they known they were going to be asked? I think that's one thing. But I don't think it's fair to ask... But I don't think it's fair to ask them about this topic.
How do you?
And they're my staff.
Lisa.
Right.
I guess I'm gonna say what I said at the workshop, because I truly believe it. We need, as a board, to make this decision with no consideration to any individual currently in any position, whether it is the existing superintendent or the administration. Because the decision we make is not dependent on who's currently here, and going forward will not be. Ultimately, it's the organizational structure that we have to approve irrespective of the individuals who may, in the future, fill those positions. Because we could have a situation where we had one or two people leave within the year. And, and this, and whatever system we select has to sustain itself beyond the individuals. So, so I think it would, I think it's frankly irrelevant as to what existing employees, I mean, it's irrelevant to who they are or what they have to say.
And, and I agreed with you at the workshop, and I agree with you here. My, my only issue is I believe there are some board members who will think that that is important to know whether or not they'll feel, what do I wanna say, that, that they'll make their decision based on their feelings, whether or not our staff can do it. And, and that's my only concern. If, if I truly believed that they would believe that it's a fundamental, which I agree 100% that you are correct on, but I'm just concerned that the full board won't make their decision based on that. And because of that, you know, if Greg doesn't feel that it's a, it's a...
Looking for you.
Uh, uh, putting you in the corner. I mean, I would, you know, as much as I respect your opinion, I would like, like to know.
These guys work for you.
No, Reed, stop. This is a board conversation.
With all due respect, they, I'm gonna invoke a policy, one of the board policies that indicates that no single board member can direct administrative work. I'm not going to permit my staff to enter into this conversation. It's not fair to them. It is absolutely not fair to them.
And they can't speak for themselves.
I'm not gonna permit it. They're my staff, and it's not fair.
Yes, Kim.
I believe, I would like to look into pursuing this a little bit further, and if, if we have, the board would like to pursue it a little bit more of the Office of Superintendent. Then, if the board decides to do that, and the board decides then to do a workshop and ask the administration, not to see if they could do it, but to see if they believe it can be done. Not personally they can do it, but what they think in their job, if the pros and cons are. Maybe not, I mean, not tonight, but I think if the board decides to pursue this, look in it. It's not tying your hands in it. Let's just take another step forward, and then ask their opinion at a different time. That's what I, I don't know if I can make that motion. Is this an action item?
Oh, I'd like to speak before any motion.
Okay, I won't do it. Okay, Lisa?
I know, Chris, from the workshop, you were very much a supporter of the, the one superintendent instead of a team approach. Could you tell me why you feel that way, or what your, your reasoning is behind it?
I can tell you that I believe we have, I believe that we have a team approach. All righty.
Okay.
With, with the superintendent, and the cabinet, and the leadership team, I believe we have that. All righty.
Okay, so then, if you believe we already have it, then can you, try to get me to understand where you're coming from. If we have it, and we, and we make it a formal Office of Superintendent, you're not, you're not...
I gave you a perfect example tonight, Lisa. We have a board that has administrators who are afraid to come forward and give reports, because the way board members get, give and take information from them, if you have that, and you add another 20 or 30% to their job, and make them responsible for running the whole district, how do you think that's gonna help our district at all? I believe that there are board members who are unable and unwilling, and Alex, I'm not talking about you, because I know you brought this forward, to work with the superintendent. It's, it's like saying, I'm going to bully someone, and instead of stopping the bullying, you pull the person away so they don't get bullied. So, because there are board members who don't want that authority figure out there that they believe is all-powerful in running a district, a $100 million district, the best way to remedy that is to not have a superintendent. Just let the district, district run on its own, let the leadership we have run the district, and see what happens. I'm not willing. I love this district. I'm not willing to take the chance that we don't have someone that we hire and hold responsible for what we need done, for what our community wants done in our schools. I wanna hire somebody. I wanna do what, what businesses do. Have somebody responsible that you hire to protect our kids, our parents, our staff. And I don't think you can ask, I mean, I understand Amro and what they did, and I think that's great. It's not something I'm gonna support. I think we have a team right now. I think that there are people who do not want the authority figure, and the way to not deal with that is to not have an authority figure. So, that doesn't, I don't think that helps our district.
Trish, do you have any thoughts?
I do. I actually have been contacted by more members of the community than I can possibly count on this particular topic. And my, they keep saying to me, how can you even consider that? And my response has been, and, and I'll say, I'll put it this way, Alex, I so appreciate your passion. I so appreciate the idea. It is novel. It is creative. It is innovative. And I, I love ideas that are novel, creative, and innovative. I embrace those things. And as anybody, if anyone knows me personally, I'm a person that is not afraid of change. But we, as a board, need to be a little more, more conservative. If, if I could see 10 school districts that run like this, if I could see 15 school districts that run like this, if I could see a bunch of models where this has been proven to work, I would be more interested in this. But I have to tell you, I have not had one member of the community, well, with the exception of, I got an email last night, and I think Reed has, has embraced this idea, beyond that, without exception, I have had people say to me, how can you guys even consider that? It's a $100 million organization. It's a, it's a huge business with, with 1,000 students, it's, I'm sorry, 7,000 students, 1,000 employees. It's, it's, it's a huge organization. I cannot, with any amount of responsibility, as, as a responsible person, I'm sorry, I said that wrong, as a responsible taxpayer, as a responsible board member, I cannot embrace an idea that is this novel and this untested. I think that we need to be more conservative, and we need to follow the traditional model of having a superintendent. And I guess with that, I'll just go ahead and make the motion. I think that we should just...
Did you wait till I finished? I asked for that, and no one opposed it. I said I'd like to have a final comment.
Let's just let everybody finish their comments, if that's okay, and then I'll come back to you for the motion.
All right, fine.
Meg, do you have any other comments?
I, I guess I would indicate, as Trish has, that I have received a number of calls and a number of comments with respect to this matter. And almost uniformly, they have encouraged me to vote in terms of a superintendent. I've, I've worked a lot of places. I've been in a number of organizations. I believe the school district is an organization that needs that visionary leader at the top, taking all the information that, that experts in their own areas and fields have, pulling all of that together, and creating the synergy that, that creates a good, strong district. Again, I'll reiterate what I've said. And I have not, I have not been on this board through the last couple of years. But I believe that the worst time for a, the worst time for a sizable change is at a time when the organization is in somewhat of a crisis mode. And I'm not talking about our schools, and I'm not talking about our school district. Because as best I can tell, and have been able to tell over the last several years, the, the students, the staff, the administration, everybody, everybody is working hard, doing a great job educating our students. But I believe we, and I'll include myself, have been in crisis as a school board. And so I think this would be the worst possible time to take a look at making a fundamental change in direction in terms of leadership. And that is further exacerbated by the fact that we've got a joint task force coming forward very soon with some incredibly sizable recommendations. And I believe it essential that we have a strong leader with experience, knowledge, background, education, that can help lead us forward. So, I, so I will be voting in that manner.
Kim, do you have any other comments?
Nope.
Jeff?
Yes, yes. This board has a history of devouring superintendents. Chris, how many?
Four. I've worked with five, but I would say five. I've hired, been part of hiring four.
So, a novel way to deal with the issue is to get rid of the superintendent, right? It's a, it's a novel idea, but just because it's a novel idea doesn't necessarily mean it's a good idea. For example, a novel idea would be to run without a board and elect a superintendent. Just have him elected.
Goes against the state statutes. I don't think you could do that.
Yeah, never know. It's a novel idea. I think it, I think it warrants exploration.
This isn't against the law.
We should check it out. Maybe we can get the law changed.
Maybe you could.
Or, yeah, I mean, there's a lot of novel ideas that might not necessarily be good ideas. But again, I do appreciate the fact that, you know, you're, we're thinking outside the box. And it is not an idea, again, I think that the problems that we confront here are of our own doing. And I think if you wanna look and see what the problem is, just look in the mirror. We need to work better as a board, be more effective as a board. I cannot see how this board could possibly manage this school district at this point. I am all in favor. Besides, I do like the, the vision. I like the leadership of one person. Every organization that I've ever been in has a leader, one person that determines the direction. And I think that more than at any time in recent history, this school board needs that type of vision, that type of leadership. So, I am all for finding another superintendent.
Okay, yes.
I just wanna, I guess my, just going back to what Dale said, you know, he told us, everybody in the public is gonna be against this. It's changed. They don't understand it the whole bit. And, and while you and, and Chris, you know, think the whole flipping of the superintendent every, I don't know what, three, four, five years, two years, whatever, that, that means that we just need to continue the approach. I, I don't say get rid of it, of the superintendent. I say have more than one superintendent, so that there is that commonality. One of the things that the focus groups wanted was consistency. They wanted a superintendent who would stick around for a while. But when, when you guys say you got calls from lots of people, it's from, it was from, you know, what they got from the media. How many of the contacts you received were from people who actually sat and listened to what Dale had to say? None. Okay, so, you know, and, and I find that very disheartening that we didn't tape that meeting so that the public could see it. Because to say you got all these comments, well, you should've. I mean, you were warned ahead of time that that's what the public was gonna do, because they have no idea about the concept, so...
But I guess I would, I would take a little bit of, many of the people that approached me are people who have been very involved in business, in an organization, organizational structure. I don't believe that, I mean, and I'm not, I'm not discounting Dale, but I don't believe that Dale, you know, is the Holy Grail in any...
Oh, no, 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 no.
In any sense of the word. And so, I think Dale was able to provide us with, with his experience and his district's experience. But the people that came forward to me provided me with information about their background and their experience, and why they believed that it wouldn't work.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, your favorite ice cream can be vanilla until you taste strawberry. And if you're not willing to taste the strawberry, you never know that that's your new favorite. So, I'm just saying, I think, I, I know it's not gonna pass. I mean, it's pretty clear how this board feels. I'm saddened by the fact that we are, we ourselves are not visionaries, that we ourselves aren't willing to at least look into this further. I, I'm, I'm very saddened by it. But, you know, clearly, whatever the majority of the board wants, that's what'll happen. So, that's it.
Ms., can I just, because I know Alex wants to finish up. I just don't like the word, the devouring. I've been on the board for four years. I think probably the longest after Chris. Technically, I've only devoured one. The other one resigned on his own. So, I mean, you know, I'm, I'm said Groundhog's Day, I'm obstructive, and I devoured one, not five.
And does it cover your opinion?
I mean, I'm just, I'm not using your words, Tillman.
I understand. It's just my opinion.
I'm just saying, I think it's just a, a routine that superintendents seem to move every two to three years. It's, it's been a history. It's, when we were, when we were doing the research, that's what they said. Don't guarantee any more than two or three years. We looked for more. He did not accept more. I mean, he didn't offer more. That's all when, when we hired him. So, that word was kind of disheartening. I wanna say it's not what I want to use, but we didn't devour it. It was change of life, so...
Just for a little explanation, when my book comes out, and I...
I won't be buying it.
I know you won't be buying it.
Just for the fact of time, because I have to work early in the morning.
You'll be very interested.
Let's go, Alex. Because we know how this is gonna go, so we'll redefine.
You like me to go before you?
Yes.
Okay. Before Dale spoke at the workshop, I took him out to eat, and I took my husband with. Wanted a chance to sit down with him, and just chat with him, and thank him for what he'd done for us up to this point. And I'd actually never, I'd never spoken to him with me as president. It was always Terry in charge, so I was just trying to, just thank him for coming again. And yes, he was paid, so. He, he really opened my eyes to this thought. It was, it's quite revolutionary. I got a lot more background on Amro itself, and why it was, why it decided to do what it did. I'm, I'm not telling you this because I think you wanna hear my life story. It's because I just want you to know that I sat there, I had the conversation, I had the conversation with my husband there too. So, I was able to bounce this off of him for the last month. This was, he's my sounding board anyway. Hi, Rich. He watches. So, I want you guys to know that I took a significant amount of heat for allowing that workshop to focus on this, and not be a half and half. It's part of the job. It's okay. But I kind of take issue with saying this didn't get a fair shake. I think we have tried very hard to give this a fair shake, including paying someone $500 and spending most of their time talking about this. And I think actually the news, media, personal opinion was very fair. I think they could've just blasted the idea, based on how Dale thought that the public would feel about this. And, and they didn't. I think they presented very level... I think they presented very level, equal points of view and gave out some of his better There are a couple reasons, though I would love to try something new, that I will not vote that way. And I want to be really clear, because I actually loved the idea, and it grew on me more and more and more. One is that, Trish said it perfectly, so I won't re-say everything she said. I have been contacted by one person who is in favor, and, boy, genuinely, I'd go up to 100 who are not. And that doesn't mean they've all called me or, I've gotten stopped a lot, let's put it that way. I don't like grocery shopping anymore. And a lot of their issue, it's, they're actually very thoughtful people, and their issue is that we are in a level of chaos, and we have a lot of work to do, and we need to just get it done. I can tell you personally that obviously people disagree with me, but I don't think it's fair to ask people who were hired for a certain position if they're willing to take on another position. I don't think that's a fair thing to ask of them. They were hired for this job, and I think we could see a mass exodus. Nobody has told me that. I have not asked anybody, you all told me not to, I did not. I'm telling you what my thought process has been. But asking people to take on that responsibility is pretty hefty. And this is kind of where it landed for me. Because this is very revolutionary, and we're taking new steps, and we'd be doing something, I'm going to be honest, the bulk of the work would land on me. To take these steps to get this done, to make sure this was done, and this person did this, and this person, it would be very inappropriate for Attila to have a role in it, and so it would be mine. A different stage in life, I would be thrilled to take on this challenge. I think it's actually kind of cool. I'm exhausted. I work 40 hours a week, at a different job, I've got eight kids, all living with me, and I do this. I couldn't take on a role this big right now. So, I too am going to thank you for the idea, I'm going to thank you for sticking with it. It has opened my mind in ways I didn't expect it to. I will be completely honest, and it has provided great conversations at my house, but it is now yours.
Okay. Trying to take notes so I can address everything that was said, so I can comment appropriately on it. So that's hopefully going to be quick, and I have a little bit that I'd read through that I worked on over the weekend, all weekend, in the midst of all the crisis my family's been going through. And into the wee morning, right before I went to work, I told my wife, I gotta leave now, I gotta leave now, please make some photocopies. I have photocopies at the end of this. One thing I want to just say right away, since Angel said hi to her husband, I'm going to say hi to my wife because I think she's watching, and my kids, please go to bed if you're still up. I don't wake you up when I'm home. Sleep. It's obvious to me that the board is skewed at this point, because we're not all finished, I am not all finished presenting, and I already heard decisions. Now, earlier I said I'm probably going to vote a certain way on a specific matter next time, but the information was presented that I decided I'm going to vote on. Right now, you're all made your, or certain people said, I'm making a decision, I made it. Now the information's there. I'm going to present it all here tonight. We need to explore the other school districts, because there are, I think, at least 10 in the United States, if that's what, did you say you needed at least 10?
I said 10 in Wisconsin.
Okay, well, there's a large one in Colorado, is what I've been made aware of tonight that I didn't know, and I'm going to research it and see what it's about. We all have our constituents, the people that we talk to as board members. Trish obviously has her, Meg specifically said leadership, that realm. Well, I think they're in the same camp. And that 100 people, Angel's 100 people, everyone, let's just say they all have 100 people. Well, I'm going to tell you, my 90% of unsalaried and salaried, union and non-union staff who work with our children daily, 90%, I'm not making this up, and we can, if you want me to prove it, give this another week, and I will prove those numbers, want to explore this further. All right, I'll just get to this, because then I won't get, I'll be a little bit more even keel, hopefully. I'm hopefully going to speak loud enough and clearly enough for the media to represent my statements tonight. The board is faced with what I believe is its most difficult decision since I've been aware of district issues. Please do not take this lightly. The concept of an office of the superintendent apparently steps on a lot of people's toes and causes confusion. What brought us to this point? Personality conflicts, failure to articulate, as well as failures to comprehend, and trust issues. This is everyone's problem, not just one person's problem. By no means am I suggesting that we go topless, but that we simply investigate the possibility of moving away from the single vision of one superintendent to the effectiveness of a cabinet of specialists. This cabinet already exists through the efforts of Dr. Wenninger. We currently have a superintendent who truly has the ability to handle every situation if time was not an issue. But a superintendent is one person who can become stretched thin. For example, due to an oversight in planning, our transportation department was not able to smoothly handle our busing needs at the beginning of the school year. These issues were already being discussed at last spring, which should have ensured a timely correction, yet one person cannot oversee everything. May I add a wholehearted thank you to the bus drivers who stepped up and made the best of a disaster. Thank you, really thank you. I would like to quickly recap the workshop with Dale Feinauer. For those who missed out, there were only five people from our community who attended, which included one teacher, one cabinet member, who should give the opinion of what she thought of that meeting, one reporter. Mr. Feinauer did a phenomenal job presenting, and only these few people and the board members in attendance heard the whole presentation. Dale was cut off after 40 minutes. He wanted to continue, but he was cut off. He didn't even get to do the whole presentation. Dale was so enthusiastic that he had to stop to tell us, his adrenaline was pumping. If only it was recorded for all to see, just that bit probably would have sold it. If only Attila and the rest of the administration's staff, public, could have attended that night, I think a great many people would be in favor, and that's kind of redundant, right? I just kind of said that without reading it, of voting whatever time necessary to further investigate this model to its capacity. Mr. Feinauer did offer to come and talk publicly again, and he also offered to work with us in the development of a model for our district. Not that we have to do it, just help us develop one and see how it looks. $500 worth it, I'll pay for it. We owe it to our children, to our employees, to our community, to give everyone the opportunity to experience exactly what we heard that night. We are moving forward tonight as we plan to vote whether this model is worth further consideration, worth further investigation from the workshop Dale Feinauer presented. Unfortunately, there was a mistake in properly posting the workshop by the district, which resulted in the meeting having to be relocated. Such confusion certainly did not help the topic get the proper exposure it deserved. The public was not only at a loss because of the location was wrong, but the nature of this discussion was incomplete, as later pointed out by the media. Also, the matter was received reluctantly by the majority of the board every step of the way. This option was never truly investigated to its full potential. We have plenty of opportunity to see how this would look in our district through a short series of meetings, or at least, the very least, we need to give the public the proper chance to hear the office of the superintendent presentation in its entirety, without rushing Dale or cutting the presentation short as it happened that night. This time, we need to proceed with a proper media release and have a venue to accommodate the crowd this controversy will draw. Also, we should videotape the presentation to create access for the entire district. Fear of failure and change is stopping people from giving this model the proper consideration it deserves. When is looking for answers, investigating options, or seeking solutions wrong? Do we not teach our children in the classrooms to do these very same things? But tonight, the school board may not choose to do what we teach our children to do. What kind of an example is this? We even have the timeframe to test whether or not this method will work within our district. While we have Dr. Wenninger still in a leadership capacity, if we begin now, Dale estimated we can be up and running in no more than six meetings in six weeks' time. One or two meetings need to be devoted to establishing the office of the superintendent, how it will look in our district, with up to four more meetings to put the groundwork into place. Attila should be able to craft a masterpiece out of this mold with Dale before Christmas break. And I personally have faith they can accomplish this with far less effort than anyone is led to believe. If we move forward with this model, we can take a slice of time to even give it a trial run. A possible timeframe could begin with the start of the new year through spring break, with the cabinet at the helm, as long as both Dr. Wenninger and Mr. Feinauer, excuse me, with the cabinet at the helm, along with both Dr. Wenninger and Mr. Feinauer in the wings to assist as needed. These talented individuals are the ones who can reshape our district to this proven workable model. Dale was instrumental in accomplishing this in AMROL, and Attila unmistakably knows the necessary roles and responsibilities in our district, and has already selected a remarkable cabinet that has what it takes. The chance of this combination may never come to our district again. If we end up in the trial period, and it is determined we still want to remain a district governed by one person's vision, we have the rest of March through the summer months to find a suitable replacement, or at least establish an interim superintendent. If this model works successfully as laid out in the groundwork, I would imagine the board would entertain buying out the remainder of Dr. Wenninger's contract if he did not want to stay on and continue to morph the office of the superintendent into something even greater and beyond everyone's expectation in his remaining months. So yes, I am excited. And if it's not clear at this point, let me make it clear. If Dr. Wenninger chooses to cooperate with this plan, I have faith in his abilities to make this work in our district, or to possibly create something greater for us with the information a further investigation could provide. If he chooses to not, if he chooses not to cooperate, we face a few extra meetings, but the model will still work, and in far less time than it would take to find a replacement superintendent. Last page, you're lucky. I could go on, my God. Let me share a word picture with you. Consider each problem our district faces as being represented by a dark room. Now we have a problem, we have a dark room, but there is a light switch hidden somewhere in it. A district superintendent enters his room, and he, she, is either able to find the light switch that illuminates the room to solve the problem, or they can't. They remain in the dark, and the right solution is not found. Now put multiple people in the dark room, who each have an area of expertise in how they conduct a search. The chance of finding the switch quickly and effectively increases dramatically. We, the board, need to make sure the views of the department heads will always be in any dark room the district encounters, rather than sending in one person on their own. Think about it. Is it not, it's not fair to that one person who is stretched thin, nor is it fair to the district that is left in the dark? How are having viable solutions available ever bad? Casting your vote tonight in favor of further investigating the office of the superintendent will only make us stronger as a district, even if we ultimately choose to stay with our current mode of operation. At least we looked. We owe it to our children, our employees, and our community to at least take an honest look, close, honest look this time, and to pay attention. I support seeking information over ignorant stagnation, because that is what education is all about. Respectfully, everyone in our district needs a chance to fully understand what is at stake here. I would like to see just one meeting without the constant input of naysayers and the fear of change stagnating our growth. The waters are now muddied through bad press and nearsighted views. The board almost completely dropped the ball and has now limited itself to one last shot to give this model the attention it deserves. If we wait till a later date, we may not have these two intelligent individuals available to help us. Let us give Mr. Feinauer and Dr. Wenninger a chance to discuss this option together with the involvement of the cabinet and present their findings to the district before the office of the superintendent concept is completely abandoned. Thank you for your time and consideration. If you would like to share what I have read, you can find a copy on my School Board Campaign Facebook page, because I'm sure people don't know this, spread it around. I make a motion to continue to investigate the office of superintendent concept and the possibility of how it might work in our district.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion, any other comments?
Want to do a roll call vote?
I'm just giving you a chance.
Ms. Totten, you are the second, correct? Correct. Mr. Kokonoski?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
No.
Ms. Sherrick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
No.
Mr. Ebel?
No.
Ms. Ehrler?
No.
Ms. Faxon?
No.
Motion fails. Three to five.
I'm giving you all copies, reread it a few times.
Okay. We are on... Meetings, dates, times, location, future agenda items. The September 29th board meeting, I have at least six things that are going to have to be an open session, so even if we decide to do a workshop, we will have an open session ahead of time to get, to deal with those. Just trying to see, any of the committee heads want to say anything before we go to committee? Yep, go ahead.
I just feel like a clarification, Amy. At the, at the end of 10A, it says, C, 10A, 5 for exception? What, where is that? What is that?
That was not deleted out from a previous agenda.
Okay, so that should be gone?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Because there was one committee meeting that was being held at a different time.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
I apologize.
Okay. Anything? Okay. So then we're on board, board approved, board member requested agenda items with their tentative dates. This would be when you can ask for things, I will tell you what I have in terms of filled out forms. Outsourcing of staff duties and videotaping of committee meetings will both be on the September 29th agenda with Jeff's and...
Why would you put that on there when you already just, the video?
Because I think decent points were brought up, we need to get the approval of...
Okay, I'm just asking if you already instructed and that you're going to do the videotape. I just, go ahead.
Are there any other agenda items that people would like? Yep.
Where are they going?
To me, Jeff, and Attila and Amy.
So for you to determine whether they're going to be scheduled for a committee?
Yep, we, if that's the most appropriate place for them, otherwise, we'll vote on it as a board. But yes, that's what we're trying to do, is get the sorting process down, so it makes more sense. Alex?
I did not fill out the form, but a new agenda item, bi-monthly listening sessions. I'll speak about it.
Okay, can I give you a form? Would that be all right?
Sure.
All right. Anyone else? Okay. Then the 29th is it. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
No.
Oh, sorry?
Thank you.
1985, parent one, parent C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction, specifically the superintendent's evaluation for 2013, 2014. So we will be continuing in closed session. Roll call vote, please.
Need a motion in a second?
I need a motion in a second.
I'll move. Second. I'll get this back to you. Mr. Kokonoski?
I'm tired of reading this, so this will be my last time. I feel this way sincerely. In order to put doubt of integrity aside and hold those involved accountable, I would prefer to do this in open session, but know that it can be done in closed session. No.
Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick?
I would prefer to do this in open session, but know it can be done in closed session. No. No.
Ms. Totten?
Again, we do way too much in closed session. I would prefer to do this in open, but know it can be done in closed? No.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Erler?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We are in closed.
Five, three, we're in closed session.